It was pretty intense information, so could you all introduce yourselves and tell us the fun stuff about this?
I'm Philip Green.
Amanda Poindexter, also on the green team.
Sarah Bruin, I'm with CORE, and the staff representative on the green team.
Thank you very much.
Really, this is a work session with the green team and with CORE. We have Mona Newton in the audience also. Mona's the executive director of CORE. And the reason that CORE is up at the table is that they've been an active participant and really did a lot of the work that you're going to hear about tonight. So Philip is going to give you an update of what we've done in the past, what we're working on in the future, as really a check-in on our next steps. So that's what we want to walk out of here with, is yeah, you're going in the right direction, go forth. And we thought that this is really total, like fifteen, at the most fifteen minutes. So if we...
Yeah, I'll try and keep this short.
Yep.
If you want us to say anything at all?
You are welcome to ask questions at any time.
I just need to leave us a little bit of...
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I tend to race, actually, if you want me to slow down, if you have any questions, please...
I listen in race speed.
Interrupt. All right, so total volunteer board, the green team supporting you guys, the council. Previously, we've done things such as put PV panels on the middle school, Albany Pool, public works buildings, the micro hydro plant on Luxinger Springs. We'd established the community leaf drop program, pushed for the ban on plastic grocery bags. And last year, we brought forward the sustainable building regulations for the multifamily and commercial buildings that you guys approved. So thank you for that, thank you for your support. This year, we're working on updating building codes to the 2015 version, starting with the energy code. You'll see that soon. Mending the town policy for garbage haulers to pay as you throw, which James will be bringing to you shortly. And then what we're really going to talk most about today, which is Climate Action Plan. Starting, we started that with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which I think you may have some information in your packets about. And we're going to look at things that we can do to implement a climate action plan. So that's what we just went through. Why should we have a climate action plan? I guess if I need to explain this to you, I probably know who you're voting for in November for president. We have a lot at stake, and it's important for the local communities to lead the way, because it really starts at home. So let's think about what we can be doing every day to affect this. Climate action planning is kind of a, it's going to be a forever process. I think we can all assume that at this point. But we start with an inventory of greenhouse gas emissions, and that we have completed. That's what CORE has done for us, which is awesome. There's a lot of great information in there. If anybody wants a hard copy of the full report, I have those. And then we also have the one-page or, you know, front and back flyer that I believe you guys each have. And anybody in the public that would like to have one, they are on the back table as well. Step two in the planning, adopt a target. And that's really all we're looking for today. But let's go ahead and talk about some of the things that step three, develop the climate action plan. The target's great, but you've got to figure out how you're going to hit the target. So we've got some ideas on what we want to start with there. But bottom line is, this doesn't happen without your support, leadership, drive, all that fun stuff. So in that greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we find that the major sources of greenhouse gas emissions, and this is generally true nationally, but this is what our local study found, is that almost 60% is energy-driven, mostly how we get the power to light our buildings, light our, heat our homes. Transportation is 27%, waste is 10%. So obviously, we will focus on the largest sectors and the opportunities to find ways to reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. That third contributor, waste, is something we can be, we can all be improving every day, each minute. I think we're all, I know I am guilty of being way too, generate way too much waste. And that waste, we tend not to think about it when it goes into the trash can and gets taken away, but it actually has long-term effects. Methane released from the landfill. We are also running out of space in our landfill, so there's another reason we need to curb our waste, because we do not have a solution after 10 years or so, whatever their, that timetable keeps changing. But it is looming. We need to find, so in those three sectors, energy, transportation, and waste, we need to find further investment in renewable energy sources, moving away from our dirty non-renewables that are a majority of our energy source now. We need to find ways to encourage less mileage and more efficient vehicles. And we also need public education on waste reduction, recycling efforts, and large and small-scale composting. Those are all things that sound reasonable. It's a lot harder when you put pedal to the metal, put the rubber to the road. So our suggested targets are a reduction of 25% by 2025 and 80% by 2050. In 2012, Basalt signed a climate protection agreement, I'm sorry, in 2006, we agreed to reduce our greenhouse gases by 7% by 2012. Far as we know, nothing happened on that front.
It maybe went up.
It probably went up. So just this year, the US, in Paris, committed to a climate change alliance that agreed to cap, do everything we can do to cap our climate change to 2 degrees Celsius. In order to meet that goal, it's going to require that 80% reduction by 2050. Still might not do it, but I don't know, future's at stake, right? Everybody's got to do everything we can.
Whatever.
So if we want to come anywhere close to achieving these goals, we're going to require significant buy-in from council, residents, and businesses of Basalt. This will include various outreach efforts to communicate the need and importance of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions in every facet of life and business. Council should also be prepared to commit significant resources in terms of capital and public support for the changes that will be necessary to accomplish such a significant and important goal. Comparing these targets to other communities in Colorado and statewide, Eagle County adopted the same goals that we are recommending. So we're aligned with what Eagle County is attempting to do as well. The statewide goal is similar there. These guys all started a little bit earlier than we did, so they're 20% by 2020, and then 80% by 2050. We decided that China set a goal in four, less than four years from now, maybe unrealistic. Aspen's goal is more aggressive in the short term, but they also started 12 years ago. They were, what were they? 30% by 2020, and also 80% by 2050. So they started 12 years ago, and they've only managed to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions by seven and a half percent. It's a concerted effort, they have a lot of resources, and they still, you know, their commercial sources of greenhouse gas have dropped by over a quarter. Vehicles are down by 13%, but the airports add a lot, 15%. Landfill's up 2%, and residential's up 5%. And on balance, means they've gone up in 12 years. But their government sources have also gone down 42%. So it's an indication of, it's not that hard to do, to lead, for the government to lead. Your municipal sources to come down, and we've really got to start with that, set the example, and let everybody know it's possible. If you guys can do it, they can do it, right? Because we know how well government works. So if that hasn't been compelling enough, Basalt's the only municipality between Aspen and Parachute that doesn't have a climate action plan in place. It's not a...
Can we start asking questions?
Please do.
Did you get a little ways on this? I mean, we don't make decisions in work sessions or anything, but my first question is, Aden sits on your committee, correct? Okay, that's good news, number one, right? What do you propose as like, I saw next steps in here, but actually, as far as like preparing a plan, getting funding, you know, I mean, where do we really start?
Right, well, we start with setting a target. Then we establish that plan that will get us to the target. We have looked at a number of things like implementing solar and trying to get as much solar in our community as we possibly can. We've also got other initiatives or interests, like making the buildings that we have more energy-efficient. But then we've also got to do things like figure out how to get public engagement so that the public recognizes what they can be doing on an individual basis to help this cause. And I think that really comes down to the narrative and really hearing it from leadership, that this is something that matters to you and should matter to everybody else, because this is our future. This is our, as far as we know, we only have one earth.
Jenda, you have something?
Oh, I was looking at my head, but what was in, I'm trying to imagine. Something that I was wondering about is can you tell me as the green team, the differences of what you implemented at the Basalt swimming pool with the solar heating of the water? How did that impact, I thought that was a really interesting number, looking at the energy use, and that our pool is one of the greatest energy users. How did that change with putting the solar water heating on?
I have no quantification. Susan, do you know?
No, you know, Philip sent me an email this afternoon and, you know, wanted some more information on those three projects, and I think we'll have to bring it back to you. We know that the pool, it shocked us, actually, when we looked at the numbers. Like, you're not seeing like the details, but the pool is still using a lot of energy. And kind of the, what the green team talked about is, I think you guys know that we have this post-project moving forward on improvements to Albany Park. And one of the things is to get a new pump, an energy-efficient pump. And we were talking about potentially going through CORE to get that, to get that grant. And those, the projects on the PV system, I was hoping Jerry was going to be able to sneak in, because Jerry, the great thing about the green team has been actually that we've always had a lot of people on the green team that have actually done the work. So, you know, Jerry went out and got grants from the Eswin Ski Company and from other sources to put together those. And I don't know that we have, I don't think we actually have a good measurement of what the savings is. And I think that was one of the reasons that we went to doing the inventory, so we could measure. In fact, I remember that for the pool, we were talking about getting this device that could measure how much energy you were saving from, is it Amitas? Thank you, sorry, I knew I was pronouncing it wrong. And it was such a costly, it was a fairly costly device, and the green team decided not to move forward. But I think where we're going now is that, that's one reason we wanted the 2004 inventory, so we could actually measure the progress, because just because we had a goal in, you know, 2006, we had nothing to measure it from. So I think we'll be doing a better job of that in the future.
Can you bring him?
Mark, I wanted to write in these gas and electric bills, but he'd be so much more worried.
We could, we have, you know, Jerry might have more information on it. Like I said, I wasn't able to pull it for this meeting, but...
Were you in on that topic?
Please, like, actually, what do you think we should do as far as...
So here's what I think we should do. This is great, I've been in on these meetings. Adopting a emissions reduction target is a no-brainer. It's consistent with every other municipality. It doesn't mean that much unless you have a plan to get there. So I would say we adopt it as soon as we can, and I, their recommendation is a good one. Two, I love to do stuff while we're organizing a plan. So one thing that Boyd's already working on is retrofitting lights. And the light retrofits have huge return on investment, 30%, 100%. Some of them are already done on Main Street.
Right, has anybody noticed? There are nine lights in the community that have been replaced with LED. You can tell?
I have noticed, one of them is by my house, and it's really lovely. I'm a big fan.
Go ahead.
You can add this to my kitchen.
So, but these kind of things, this is going to come up in the budget discussion, and it's always, oh, we have no money. But it's almost like the town can't afford not to invest if it's a 50% return. So we'll deal with that. So implement lighting retrofit. Two, adopt a new building code, revise the energy component of the building code to 2016, right? Is that what you're looking at? 2015. We're currently on the 2006 code, it's just outdated. We don't have to adopt the whole code right now, because it's complicated, but the energy piece makes all kinds of sense. That's a major, major move, and it's one of the best things we can do. And then, as we're doing that, climate action plan, we can start doing that. I was just in Gunnison yesterday, at Western State, and a professor comes up to me and he says, "I wrote all the climate action plans for Aspen, Glenwood, in the valley. We do it with students, it doesn't cost anything." I was like, "Sign us up." We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Getting that plan, as we discussed, making it simple, getting it on the books, isn't going to be that hard. Let's work with students and..." So those are my quick and dirty recommendations, but those are substantial.
They are. Could I just throw one more thing in, because I know we've got too many things on our work session, always. But in that climate action plan, I mean, any plan in my life has a funding piece to it. Could you make sure that you include, like, we think that the government should come out of general fund with this much, and we should find this much here and this much here? Because that's what makes it a reality, that's what gets it passed. So that would be really appreciated if that was included in there, so that we had an idea of how we could approach this and actually start.
Since I got on council, what, three years ago, and even before that, I've been interested in a collaboration between Holy Cross, DOW, up by the power station up here, the substation. We could put in, you know, if we had four acres, we could put in a lot of PV, you know, a lot, a pretty big array. And right now, snow masks, we're doing an offset program if they snowmelt the roads. We make them do solar to offset. And most of the areas on Wood Road and stuff are not conducive to a good solar location, and they're doing the clean energy collective, where you can buy a solar panel and rifle, and it's tied to the house. We could do something similar up there, but it seems to fall on deaf ears. I know we've got a lot of other things on our plate, but if you guys could, you know, make a couple phone calls and just see if it's doable.
We can give you a report later on that, Mark, because Charlie Effort, who was with CORE, did some work and research for us on that, and I can give you some results on that. It wasn't as easy as it would just automatically look like, but we can, we can give you that. Charlie will be here later this afternoon, this evening too, because he's coming for our, when we're adopting the energy code.
I just want to second that, I strongly support it, and there may be creative ways to do it. One of the problems with municipalities doing solar, as you know, is they can't capture the corporate tax credit. So maybe there's a financing model that uses a business that then flips it after seven years. So, and I would love it as a statement by the town doing this. It won't be a ton of power, but it could be a significantly sized array.
So, there. And I was just wondering if Mona wanted to add anything, since CORE has been providing so much support to us?
I think what I'd like to add is that I'm glad that we can be a resource to the town, and it's a great partnership, and I know that we can provide, you know, we work with a number of the communities, all the communities in the valley, from Aspen to Glenwood Springs. And we, as Tim mentioned, we continue to nudge things along and try to encourage everybody to adopt the same building codes, adopt some similar planning, and keep moving forward to reduce emissions, cut energy costs, make buildings more comfortable and safer. And we can all do this together, we're all learning from each other. So I'm happy to be working with CORE and be a resource in the valley.
Well, clearly, we really appreciate CORE as a resource, because we have maybe less resources than Aspen or somewhere else. So thank you very much. And I think we probably need to make a plan for what happens next.
Well, we'll be bringing back the...
In a resolution to adopt the goal that they've established here.
We're all supportive of that goal.
Yeah. Right?
Well, yeah, we can't really vote right now, but...
But, yeah, general.
I didn't hear anybody not supporting it.
No, no, there's no not supporting, I don't...
And then we'll be including, you know, developing a climate action plan for the task for 2017, and working with CORE on how much they can help us and with students, etc.
Great, great idea, Aden. Thanks so much for your help.
Thank you for your time.
You're young, you won't lose energy for a long time. Hopefully, right?
I'm not young.
He's probably younger than you, though. Thanks.
Maybe by a couple.
Okay. Thank you, Philip.
So, observations from town consultant on town manager search. Timothy Gayen, how are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi. Thanks for hanging in there for a couple weeks.
Really love...
You have your own name tag.
I really love your climate over here.
Our climate...
I was 32 in Breck this morning, so... I'm going to do this quickly. One of my rules is, has always been that I sent you a lot of written material, I ain't going to reread my written material. I hate people that get up on a PowerPoint and reread the PowerPoint to you.
God, yes.
I'm assuming you've already read all that stuff. One of the charges that you gave me was just to kind of help the organization and take a look at it. And that leads eventually to how you want to make your decision relative to a potential recruitment. So I've given you some info on the recruitment, I've given you some background on, hopefully, your discussion that you'll have with a potential intern, to help you through the next, whatever period of time you decide is appropriate. I will tell you, I think an intern is very helpful to this organization in particular, mainly because you've got a really, really small staff, and you've got a big agenda with a lot of stuff going on. So any help you can get, I think, would be helpful to keep you guys moving forward. With that being said, I want to thank everybody for taking a little time to visit with me. I really appreciate that. My observations are based on two weeks, so you've got to take it with a grain of salt. It's kind of what I've seen, heard, listened to, observed the meeting. So it's within that context that I tell you this. Secondly, I don't think any of this stuff is going to surprise you. I mean, I think you know it, most of it, but maybe it helps to hear it again. You guys got some good stuff happening in town. Sometimes that's forgotten with all the other background noise that's going on in any community. But you really do have some exciting stuff related to affordable housing, childcare, projects, underpass, you name it. They are big stuff, and don't forget that. And you ought to celebrate those things, because they are very important. Communities would die to have some of your affordable housing stuff that's going on right now in the mountains. It's a big deal. So keep that in mind. My first observation is, I think this group works pretty well together. You're civil, you listen to each other, you respect each other. Doesn't mean you agree on everything, but you do listen. And that is a great talent for a council, believe it or not. I mean, a lot of councils don't do that, and because of that, they don't get to consensus, they don't work together to try to get some stuff done. So I think, I think that's a real positive. You're really committed to the community, absolutely. I don't see anything that would go contrary to that. And I think you acknowledge the fact that you have some challenges out there. I mean, you're upfront about it, at least you worded to me, about that, you know, the community is not all on board in all cases. There's turmoil to some extent within the community. There is always concern, even within your own staff, about what's going on related to that. But most of those are solvable, but you're going to have to work hard at it. The, some of the newer council member, I think you could use some good training and coaching. I think you kind of were left to kind of flounder on your own, to come up to speed. Good councils, particularly when they first get elected, you want to get them up to speed as quickly as possible. And even in the best-case scenario, it'll take you a good six months to get there. So you need that help, and that, I think, is a manager role. And also, your legal counsel can play a very important role related to that. And you've got outside organizations that can help you do that, and you ought to take advantage of those things. I know it takes time, but it can make a big difference in how you work together and how you get up to speed. There are just some basic stuff that, unless you've been an elected official for a while, you just don't know. And you can step into it if you're not careful. And so I would recommend that you look at that and take advantage of that, and maybe your intern can give you some ideas if you head in that direction. Some of the big opportunities I think you have coming up, budget is huge. In my mind, the budget is one of the most important decisions you make annually. It's your blueprint, it's how you will get stuff done. It's whether or not you've got enough money to do the stuff that you want to do. So linked to that is prioritization and goal-setting. So take advantage of that time. I've chatted with Judy quite a bit about really trying to make that a great opportunity for you guys to get all on the same page and up to speed. Which leads me to one of your weaknesses. You've all talked about communication and about challenges in communication, whether it's what the council knows, what the staff knows, what the community knows. You're working towards getting over that, but there are voids. There clearly are voids out there, whether perceived or real. And continuing to work at that will go a long way, I think, to re-establishing trust within the community. Maybe not everybody, but at least the broader community, and among yourselves and among your staff. I found voids with what the council knows. And that also has to do with whether or not things were documented properly, whether they were communicated properly, timely, those type of things. One of the rules in the manager world is no surprises. And that's what I live by. I mean, the council has to know what's going on, and they have to be up to speed. And then the staff has to be linked to that, and then in turn, the community's linked to that. And when all that is happening, you have a pretty good synergy going on. Again, not everybody will agree with you, and not everybody will like everything you do, but at least they can say they know. So there isn't any void there in the information. Your budget process is a great place to start that. I mean, by, a budget is a communication document that tells the community what you hope to get done. And it's very important. I think you will have some challenges with your budget. Based on what I've seen and what Judy and I have been trying to figure out in the two weeks I've been here, you know, you know you've done deficit spending. Whether you knew it or not, or were cognizant of it, you have done that. And you're now at a point where your fund balances are not as healthy as they probably should be. Particularly anybody that's lived through the recession, which we, I did. And you hate cutting staff, you hate cutting, all these things. But if you're not prepared for that, and you don't have that buffer, it's even harder. But you need to understand where the money is, where it comes from, and where it's going to. And then you guys have the job of prioritizing that and deciding where's the appropriate place to put those resources at the end of the day. That'll be your challenge. I think it's exciting. I love that kind of stuff. And I hope you do too, because that is really your blueprint. Long-range planning has been a little lacking in the capital improvement area. In fact, you don't really have a long-range capital improvement plan. Every community ought to have one of those, because it helps you start looking ahead as to what resources you're going to need. There's a little void or a weakness in documentation, written agreements, that the council has seen and approved. That should be cleaned up, it's just standard practice. It shouldn't be left to handshake agreements. There's nothing worse than having somebody walk into a meeting and said, "So-and-so agreed that I would get this", and you knew nothing about it. So that ought to get cleaned up, and it's easy to do, it's not very hard at all. The staff is small. The staff is overloaded. The staff will make mistakes because of all those things. Now, you can't solve the staff problem until you know the budget. But you can certainly control the prioritization of what gets done. And I think that's going to be important as part of your budget. And I think that's gonna be important as part of your budget process. You've got a lot of stuff on your platter, good stuff, but it's a lot of stuff, and not a whole lot of people to throw at it. And it's also, unfortunately, forces you into looking at more consultants. And there's always a debate, in-house, out-of-house, how do you do that? You gotta balance that. I mean, I don't have a great answer for you, but clearly, when you don't have a big staff, you're gonna have to look to outside help to get some stuff done. As you do the budget process, be sensitive to that workload. The staff will do anything, they'll die for you to get stuff done. That's what staffs do. Unfortunately, they can't do everything, so you gotta be sensitive and help them, but they also gotta communicate that to you through your acting manager, your interim manager, your finance director, so that you have a good feel for that. And so, you have a realistic expectation of what you can get done at the end of the day. Because you wanna get it done well. Nothing worse than having it half-done, and then you're coming back and trying to resolve the problem later on, which happens way too often in municipal government, believe it or not. I keep councils at a staff issues, that's what the manager's job is. But I have, I will share, I've shared stuff with Judy, I've shared stuff, if, if you do select your interim tonight, to give 'em some idea of some things that they may wanna take a look at. But I wasn't here long enough to really do a good job in looking at the details of staff assessment and all those type of things. But, it's a good to have a fresh eye to have that done, as you look down the road. And not surprisingly, much like the council was left a little bit in the dark on certain things, some of your key staff were left in the dark on certain things. They're playing catch-up. And I know they're gonna try to get as much to you as they can as a part of the budget process, so you have the full picture, but they're digging in the records now to figure out what happened, who said what, what agreements were made, those type of things, so that you have that full decision. And I think it was Katie that said, you know, "There's legal agreements, and there's kinda the moral agreements." Well, the legal side's pretty easy, it's the moral side that you'll probably struggle with, because some of these are not in writing, and, and they were verbalized. The communication part, I, I know you're already working on it. I think the budget's a great way to start. I think your communication consultant can hopefully bring you some good ideas about how to improve that. I will tell you, there's a perception in the community that the council is not visible in the community, around the community. Real or not, that's a perception. So, part of the communication kinda falls back to, how do you wanna outreach, how do you get out to the community, how do you talk to them? Some people advocate a lot of public hearings, you know, a lot of meetings, those type of things. Much like your schedule is tough, the public's schedule is probably tough. And they're probably raising families, and they're doing all that other kinda stuff. So, really think through that. I mean, what is, what is the most effective ways to really reach out to those people? And in a small town, I, I used to do most of my business in the post office and the grocery store. I don't know how many times I was stopped by citizens, just come up to you and say, "Tim, why the hell are you doing that?" You know? And then you have a chance to, to answer them, that's kinda what happens in small towns. Those are challenges, but I, I think you can overcome them, I think you've already started to overcome them, and I think your transparency commitment, your communication commitment, I think the community's hearing that, I'm not sure if they're believing it yet. So, that's kinda the next step, you know, you gotta perform at, at, at the end of the day. I repeatedly hear complaints all over the state about exec sessions. I mean, everybody, we use 'em because they're very important as a, as a, as a process that the state government allows us to do, they're, they're there for a purpose. But many people believe that they're a way to hide stuff. I mean, quite honestly, that's what, what people think. My recommendation is, as much as you can be descriptive about how you list your executive sessions, the better you can be. And you did it kinda tonight, you're saying in your exec session, you're gonna talk about the interim manager. Well, that tells the public a lot. And then when you come out, you're gonna make a decision, and that'll be public. Some stuff you can never make public, I mean, personnel-type things, litigation, well, maybe litigation you can eventually, but those are all tough ones. But the more you can be transparent about it, it, it's recommended. Some communities, Boulder is an example, have, have made a rule that they don't go into exec sessions hardly ever anymore. That's tough to do when you have land acquisition, some of those type of thing, where you can get sued if you're not careful. So, take it for what it's worth, but ju- just try to keep always being transparent and, and always doing that. And, you know, being upfront to the people when you can't tell them something. I mean, half of the story is, when, when they look you in the eye and say, "What were you doing?" "Well, it was a personnel thing, we really can't talk about, and I'd love to tell you all about it, but I can't," at the, at the time. Lastly, on the recruitment process, you, you saw it in my notes, but I have been a big fan of including the public in recruitment processes. I think when you get the buy-in of the community, and you involve them, legitimately involve them, not just, you know, come to a cocktail hour and meet our candidates, but really legitimately involve them and, and listen to their opinions about who they've met and who they think is a good fit in the community. I think it goes a long way to building a great support network for that future manager at the end of the day. The manager is a partner, and, and when he comes to your community, he's making a real commitment to come here at the end of the day. And as you know, in a mountain town, it's not easy. I mean, there's huge issues about climate, housing, all those type of things. So, the more you can make that a real synergy between the council, the community, and the staff, I think you're gonna end up with somebody really good, long-term. When you do it, how you do it is up to you, I've given you some ideas. Certainly, Ron has also had some experience in that area, if you end up selecting him as your interim. So, think about that, try to think it through, but try to make it as collaborative process as you can. This is my last day here, my last evening, so if you wanna hit me with any questions or anything else, I'm happy to answer, 'cause I'm going on vacation.
I have one question. So, you gave us a lot of recommendations and a lot of, you know, information, what is the one big takeaway? If you had, if you could just say one thing to take away of what you've learned in the last two weeks?
You're no different than any other small town that struggles with big issues, is the one big takeaway. I mean, every small town, whether it's in rural Colorado or anyplace else in the country, wrestles with these kinda things. I think your biggest, my biggest takeaway is that because of, of your makeup of your council and your jobs not being in the community necessarily, I think it presents a unique challenge to you, which is a little different than some other communities where the people are working in the community, or you have people that are in the community retired and have time. I think your time is your biggest challenge, your time commitment. I don't know how to solve it, but it is.
You could solve it, I'm, I'll pay you personally. You hit the major point of my life of time.
Well, and, and clearly, a manager can play a big role there, but that manager's gotta be in sync with the rest of the council. If he's out representing you, there's another cardinal rule with managers, you can't get out too in fro- too far in front of your council. You gotta be in sync, you gotta be working together, you gotta be conveying the same message so that everybody's on the same page. And that's our job, that's what we should be doing really well. It can really help a council that's time-starved, you know, where they have a real hard time with time. But, at the end of the day, your community is really the one that's gonna look to you for that leadership role.
I just wanted to add, too, and I don't know, Tim has talked to all of us individually, which was very appreciated, not used to being reached out to, quite honestly, and at least to me, and I've heard from a couple of other people, has offered that he potentially could come back here and help us hire a manager in November.
I didn't promise that.
Did I say promise?
Well, he, he said, he has offered that possibly he could do that, so I just want everyone to keep that in mind and, because we all, well, those of us who have lived through head hunters know they are extremely expensive. Tim is already familiar, to some extent, with this council and our needs, based on his individual interviews with us, so, and for those who don't know, I have known him for twenty years, have tremendous trust in him. So, it's something to think about, and we probably don't wanna think about it all that long, because it's gonna be happening quickly.
My plan to retire was not to work for at least six months, so you guys have already made me violate that.
You made a mistake. So, are there other questions or thoughts?
I guess one, um, I'm really interested in the community values and coming up with the community mission statement, vision statement. I heard John Warner speak last week about Breckenridge's vision statement and the process of doing it. Do you have any recommendations to us as a council? When would be a good time to start working on that, and who should spearhead that project?
Sure, sooner the better. I think, I saw your vision, the presentation at the meeting, I thought it was excellent, I, I think it's a good start. But a vision is only as good as the meat you put onto it, and the work you do out in the community to make sure that's the community's vision. What was successful that John Warner talked about in Breckenridge is the council stepped back from that process and let the community run it. Well, the staff ran it, but the community was really, it was a community vision that the council then adopted. And that went a long way to helping not only make future decisions, but the coun- the community's support of when they made those decisions was just amazing. I mean, if, if you trust your public, and you let them decide what's the future of your community, you'll find consensus comes around about eighty percent, will come around, coalesce around whatever that is. That doesn't mean you won't have struggles, because I'll tell you one story about Breckenridge, and that's my only story about Breckenridge. When we did our community vision plan, we came up with two principles. One was community character, which is a huge issue here, I feel it all the time, affordable housing, all that kinda stuff. Secondly, was economic viability. And guess what clashes all the time? Those two. Because in, in, in one voice, you wanna have those revenue streams to be able to do the things you want, but on the other side, you gotta public that doesn't want any more traffic, doesn't want any more festivals, doesn't want, whatever it is. You know, so you have those two, you become the balance. You're the ones that are the arbitrators of, of those type of vision pieces. But hearing them very clearly from the community and then using them in your decision-making process, the community can't abdicate that responsibility then when you say, "By the way, this is what you told us." Guess what? We're trying to follow what you said. And it's worked very well in Breckenridge, we've been very lucky, related to that. So, the, the best way to do it is to get a consultant, quite honestly, and get somebody, you don't have a staff to do it, they don't have the time to do it, but if, if you get a good process, whether it's surveying, public meetings, those type of things, and really get people in there to work on what are the core values of, of your future, it'll go a long way to getting that done, probably in about a six-month to an eight-month process.
So, maybe aiming for New Year, with the holidays?
That would be great, but you've got a lot of stuff on your platter, too, so it's kinda one of, one of those things.
Anybody else? Tim, apparently we have a presentation for you, if you'd like to approach the bench. I know.
It's your pink slip.
It's your pink slip.
That's my pink slip.
Anyway, I think we all really thank you for what you have done in this very short time, and, so, it's just a card. Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Yep, it's been great fun.
Good evening.
Keep on that budget.
Yes.
Don't get hurt on your bike, either.
My name's Tim Farina.
Such a pleasure.
Good luck with you, Tommy.
And maybe you, and maybe you could introduce the gentleman that you brought to us.
My last act is, I, I think four of you have already met him, but this is Ron Miller. Ron is the one that, that I finally found. Come on up here, Ron.
Come on up, yeah.
Uh, he's here to answer questions, and assuming you guys feel comfortable, be sure to be able to work out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Good evening.
Hi, Ron.
I'll be back in if you have any work for me, I like this interview.
So, sir, how are you tonight?
Good evening, I'm great, how are all of you?
Great.
I'm very honored to be considered for the interim position. I started in a community of thirty-five-hundred in Nebraska, number of years ago, so I am very comfortable in this size of a community. I wanna first say how disappointed I am that Tim didn't resolve all the community's issues in the two weeks he was here, there was a lot left to be done, but, just teasing, he's a great guy, and, and you're fortunate to have had him during the period he was available. If I can make some introductory comments and then answer questions, some of you who I met with previously have heard some of this, so apologize for the repetition, but in terms of my top priorities, as Tim mentioned, communications is top of the list, both internally and externally. My role is to keep council regularly informed and have a policy of no surprises. I'm also, bless you, I'm also very accessible, both to council, employees, community, business people, everybody will have my cellphone number, so I'm available twenty-four-seven. I believe in participation in the community, not just come in the office and return home. If there's community events, special meetings, whatever's going in the community, I plan to be involved, and I wanna participate and be as much of a member of the community as I possibly can. I also wanna ensure transparency in the conduct of city business. I firmly believe the public has a right to know what the representatives and staff are, are doing, what you're planning, and what's being considered, so that's one thing that'll be a priority. Staff-wise, I intend to provide solid leadership, specific direction, and support for the staff. They are important into making the community successful in partnership with the city council, so I wanna make sure that there's a positive team atmosphere between the council and staff and members of the community. I will have, if I'm fortunate to be selected, an open-door policy. So, as mentioned, I will be accessible, I don't treat employees at arm's length, I get to know everyone, want them to get to know me and know that I'm available to 'em, and that I'm here to support them and help them become successful in whatever role they play with the city. Although I would be interim, I would still expect excellence in terms of customer service by all city employees, and that would be communicated and, and understood. Budgeting, as mentioned, is of critical importance. I'll do everything I can to prevent budget deficits that have been projected for 2016 and 2017, so that will be something very immediate that I would start to work with. I would further the goals of workforce, housing, and childcare, I understand how important that is to a community. I've got children of my own, and I know what, how important it is that they're appropriately, their needs are met. I would hope to help develop the town's first CIP or capital improvements program. It's part of the long-range planning that every community should do, and I think it should be formalized, probably by resolution, and it should be a companion piece to the city budget. I would hope to get that underway, I don't know what the timeframe is, well, Judy and I've talked a little bit about the schedule for adoption of the budget, but I would try to get that set up in terms of what your priorities are for the next five years, and have a funding plan for each project for each year, again, within a balanced budget, operating budget for each year. I'd wanna work closely with the business community, Chamber of Commerce, civic and social organizations, and let them know that city's open for business, the town is, and I'm available, to be a link and be a communicator on their behalf to you, and let you know what they're thinking, what their issues are. My last, not my last one, but one of my other top priorities is to provide a seamless transition from whoever the interim manager is to the permanent manager. I want it as little, or as less disruptive as possible, 'cause I know how- I want it as little, or as less disruptive as possible because I know how unsettling it is for employees to have several managers in a short period of time. So whatever I can do to continue Tim's efforts and make it, again, seamless and as less unsettling as possible, moving into your permanent manager situation, that's something I'm going to work very diligently on. Just to wrap up, I consider my strengths, budgeting and finance, the goal being to achieve a balanced operating budget each year and to ensure the long-term financial integrity of the community and of the town. I think I also have a successful record of economic development, includes promoting high-quality residential and commercial development and good long-range land use planning. I would also help promote and develop community quality-of-life amenities such as parks and recreational facilities. That's not important only for the residents and future residents, but it's important in terms of economic development because it's what businesses look for in terms of relocating to a community. So they look at the schools and the parks, recreational amenities, and the town's, you know, interest in new business growth. I would maintain what I understand are very good intergovernmental relations you have with the counties, the school districts, special districts, CML and other organizations, DOLA. That's important to strengthening the community. Finally, I think I'm good at creating teamwork within an organization. Priority is, of course, trying all I can to continue to get council consensus on issues, but also feel like there's a good working relationship and mutual trust between the employees and the city council. So I would do everything I could to maintain a strong linkage there, and so there's that mutual trust and understanding. So, those are my initial comments, and I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions you have.
Two questions, council friends.
I got to ask my questions at our.
Yeah, we did. But you might want to ask them if you think that the answers are something that would be.
Sure, let me go back to them.
Well, the one big question that we had, and I think, I don't know if it came out in any of our piles of paper, is when you could report.
The earliest probably would be October 6th.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Well, it's what it is.
Yeah, because.
It's not far.
We have important family things, like a baby shower coming up, and I think I'd better be there for that. And.
Might not be.
And some other commitments.
That's fine.
So I would want to make sure that's cleared before I start, so I don't have other things immediately on my plate that I have to also.
Shuffle back and forth.
Shuffle around.
Any other questions? Some of us, like I said, have already talked to Ron, so.
Okay.
I have a comment. Town of Assault, not city.
Yeah, I did, I did correct.
I remind Bernie of that, too.
I did correct myself.
I'm just kidding.
He's not a stopper.
But I will remember that.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thanks, Ron.
And we have a little bit of time. I think we probably have some food back somewhere.
Some what?
Yes, if you want, food, if you want to stay and have a chat when we have food before we actually bust into the regular meeting.
I plan to stay for the regular meeting and.
Oh, good.
I'd like to introduce my wife, Jeannie, who's in the back.
Hi, Jeannie. I wondered who you were. Thought you were a new newspaper person or something.
No. She's interested in the community and.
Excellent. And she's probably hungry, too. You're probably hungry, too.
Thank you.
So, if we don't have anything else on the work session agenda, we're going to eat and then we're going to come back and go into executive session to discuss further.
All right.
Get those fancy chairs.
Please.
Should we get the big box? I don't know. Who's seen Smith?
Yeah, it's fancy. Thank you. Oh, no.
Yeah. Are you ready?
We are.
Okay. We are going to call this meeting to order at 6:25. Could we ask for a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you, Pamela. Our first item of business is an executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel matters in accordance with CRS 2464024F specifically related to interim town manager candidate Ron Miller. And this is Ron Miller, and he has asked that this be an executive session, so we are going to ask for a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. So we are in executive session for a few minutes. If we could.
Clear the room, please.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you. Mark Kittle is calling this meeting to order. Everybody who wants to chat, please go in the hallway for a little while. Thank you. Okay, we just returned from break and an executive session where we chatted with our town manager interim candidate Ron Miller, and there will be action taken on that discussion later in this agenda. Right now, I just want to thank Grassroots for recording and broadcasting our town meetings. Thank you, Sarah. Our videographer, we've had her in and out, in and out tonight. And also to invite everybody to the mayor's coffee tomorrow at Saxies from eight to nine. So before we, did you have something?
I do. Prior to moving into consent agenda, I would like to make a motion that we table item ordinance number 26, series 2016, in light of the fact that we do not have the critical traffic study related to Southside developments.
Can you tell me which item?
That's item 9A.
Thank you. Item 9A. Is there a second?
Second. You go ahead. I'll second that.
Okay, is there a discussion on this? I think basically Katie said the reason. Okay.
Yeah, it says anything with all the information that provided ahead of.
Time the Friday before. And did we table it to date certain?
It's a public hearing, so let's go ahead, although we have an item on the discussion of this agenda to pick the meeting day in October. Let's go ahead and do October 11th, because we have other public hearings scheduled for that day that wants to continue.
So we're tabling until October 11th?
Continue. Actually, continue would be better, continue the public.
I need to table the same thing. Go on.
Motion to continue ordinance number 26 until October 11th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks, guys. So now we really do have the consent agenda and the.
Jackie.
Yes. Counselor Tannenbaum is recusing himself from the consent agenda because he has got a conflict regarding a resolution in support of Picken County's open space. So, we do have a couple of resolutions on here. I'm going to ask that these resolutions be pulled off. One is a resolution supporting the library district question, and one is a resolution supporting the Picken County open space question. And I've asked Bernie if he would like to speak just briefly about the library question.
Yes, I would highly support the ballot issue requesting some additional revenues for the Assault Regional Library, so it may continue to provide the same level of excellent service that we have all come to expect. Having served as the treasurer and vice president of the library for five years, I can tell you it's a very well-run machine, very responsive to the needs of the community, and a tremendous cultural asset. And we, they have husbanded their assets, but with the big decline in property values, they've never seen a real full recovery, and their reserves are down to where they need to get some additional funding, or they will have to curtail some of these valued services. So, I fully support it.
Thank you. And I will just say on behalf of support for Picken County's open space and trails questions, that if it wasn't for the partnerships with Picken County especially and also Eagle County, we wouldn't probably not be able to maintain our urban growth boundaries, and this would probably be wall-to-wall development for as far as the eye could see. So, I think all of us on this council, and I think most people in the communities, support that open space fund. So, that's all. And so Gary can't come back in until we vote on this, so can I still leave this on the consent agenda, put it back together, Tom, and just ask for a motion for the whole consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, let's wait for Gary.
That's okay.
I'm kidding. Okay. All right. So our next item is council comments, reports, and disclosures. Are there any council comments? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to announce the exciting, wonderful news that Eagle County Down Payment Assistance Program in the last two weeks, or it was last week, provided down payment assistance, the first one in the Roaring Fork Valley, to a Basalt employee. And that is just a really wonderful utilization of our counties and our towns working together. If anyone would like to learn more about primary down payment assistance, it can be found, oh, I'm sorry, that I, if you go to the Eagle County website, that's where you can find the information. Tori Banks, or Tori Franks, excuse me, is the director of the program. Another one is, I'd like to comment or speak about the Basalt Affordable Community Housing Regional Meeting that we had this past Thursday, and that was with Eagle County, Pittkin County, Ski Company. There was a variety of groups involved, and we will be meeting again in November as a, as this region, this regional group, to make a SWOT statement of what our strengths, weaknesses, threats, and I forget what the O stands for, so that we can, opportunities, so that we can work with reparosity, equitable, address community concerns with transportation, childcare, et cetera. And it's, we're making great strides, and these are just some of those examples.
Thank you. And if I could just say, too, about this deal where a Basalt town employee was the first person to get a down payment assistance from Eagle County, it's because Jen has reached out to the Eagle County Housing Authority and has worked very closely with them. Otherwise, it's not something you think of. So I just have to say, give big accolades to every member of this council, reaches out constantly to other organizations, other businesses, other governments, and that is how you find opportunities like this. So I'm very proud of everyone on this council and very thankful. Other council comments, reports, disclosures? Oh, I have one that I've been told I have. Okay, October 11th is Yom Kippur, begins on the eve of October 11th. Staff suggested keeping the budget work session to begin at 3:00 PM, because it's a three-hour, very long work session for budget. The only items on that agenda beyond the work session could be consent agenda items to continue items already scheduled for that. The work session would end by 6:00 PM to honor the start of Yom Kippur. Would council like to host a special meeting on October 18th or continue everything to the October 25th of regular meeting? Or do something else beyond 6:00 PM on the 11th?
And Jackie, if I could clarify, we did have public hearings scheduled for the 11th, and the idea of deciding when the meeting would be now is, one, you know, plan ahead to when to continue, and two, if we have items on tonight's agenda that we're going to be on the 11th, that we would continue to the 25th.
Okay.
But we do have, we did have public hearings on ordinances that we had originally scheduled for the 11th.
Okay. So this is something we kind of need to take care of tonight. Do we want to have regular items on the 11th or stop after the budget hearing first?
So the 11th, you're talking about having a meeting at 3:00?
Well, yeah. I think we are, I think we're locked into that budget work session.
I don't know if I can move on. I have another work commitment.
Anybody else? Do we want to just leave it as suggested that we don't have any items after 6:00 PM? Okay, that's fine. And then, do we want to have a special meeting on October 18th or continue everything to the 25th, which I think is our regular meeting day? Special meeting or regular meeting?
I want a special meeting.
I would go for a special meeting. These agendas get so long.
Are we okay with a special meeting?
Yes.
Here, you got it. Oh, thank you for reminding me, Pam. Other council comments, reports, disclosures? Okay, thanks, guys. Citizen comments for items not on the agenda and items added to the agenda after the deadline. Citizen comments for items not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
I had distributed a letter directly to Pam Schilling around 4:30 this afternoon in reference to Jen Riffle's email of July 11, 2016, to Gary Tannenbaum, Mark Kittle, and Katie, which constitutes a direct open meetings violation. To top it all off, Ms. Riffle decided to not communicate the truth to the other three counselors. I, as my mother would say, I'm mortified at what's going on with this freshman legislator. I'm going to read her email, and I'm going to read some responses from the people that she directly associates with her email. "I'm only standing in front of you right now to discuss one thing. That's open meetings violations and a counselor that is lying to their own council and to the community." So I'm just going to read this stuff, and then I'm going to sit down. This is dated July 11th at 2:39 in the afternoon. It's from Jennifer Riffle at basalt.net to Gary Tannenbaum, Mark Kittle, and Katie. Subject is Marijuana Resolution 7A. "Some bullet points to consider regarding item 7A marijuana resolution. Keep it simple. Keep the ordinance exactly as it is. What does a Main Street dispensary message to our youth and families say? How does this resonate with the community perspective? RE1 Superintendent Rob Stein is willing to attend and speak against the resolution on second reading and will, and so will Minesprings and the Hope Center representatives. There are no tax income gains for the town, though it may look so. The amount of time for planning and legal eats up the taxes that come in via Susan Phillip and James Lent. It will cost the town more to rezone due to increased conflicts via Phillip and Knott. Conflicts include smell traffic and public consumption, which have been issues in Carbondale and Aspen. Chief Knott personally is against rezoning and sees it will ruin community character. Park Avenue and Winter both viable and either being pursued or have had it in dispensary. Willetts is viable if someone takes on a PUD amendment." in dispensary. Willetts is viable if someone takes on a PUD amendment in Block 5. Bolinsky is against dispensaries. False statement in Scanlon cover letter stating, question marks, there are no viable locations. Applicant is interested in possible future rezon of Three Bears Building to residential upstairs, per applicant representative. The HVAC system is not separated and units above will sound, smell conflict, which has been a past issue for tenants in the building, hence a high vacancy. Only staff person having an issue, staff issues noted as reasoning of resolution is Mike. This whole resolution is 100% his. Planning department wants to keep as-is and was not consulted on resolution. We do not need to consider this item. It is functioning as written. No need to limit to one license or rezone. This is sheerly driven by non-community serving interests. Keep it simple. Keep the ordinance as-is." It's illegal, Jennifer Riffle. That's illegal. This is a letter from Michelle Muthing. She is the executive director at the Hope Center. Did you speak to her? No, you didn't. This is dated Sunday, September 25th, 2016 at 6:42. Hello, David. I have no idea who this woman is or what she believes a Hope Center representative would refute. I met with Bill Maron to introduce him to Sandy, who's the chair of the board. As Sandy met his ex-wife and close family friend and she wished to meet Bill, the discussion was positive and Sandy affirmed what I had already stated, which was that I was confident we could come to a solution to working together. But a presentation to our board by Bill, like he did with Way Out's board, was not appropriate at this time. As we are totally restructuring our board, members are coming on and off. Thank you for bringing this to my attention as I will pass it on. That speaks for us as an agency and we gave absolutely no authorization for this remark to be made. Take heart, care, David. Michelle Muthing, Executive Director of the Hope Center. She wrote me back nine minutes later and she said, "It's really interesting. I don't know her and my staff," which is very small in number, as you know, "don't know her either. Hmm. I don't like being misquoted nor my name being used for things when not asked. Thanks again for this information." Michelle, what do you think? That's the Hope Center. Mr. Bolinsky is sitting in the room right now. He wrote me back at 8:15 yesterday morning and he said, "Nope, didn't discuss the topic with Jen or anybody on council. Only with staff over the year. It's been a non-issue for Willetts." Here's a letter from Rick Hayes. He's the manager for the Three Bears Building. Dear Norm and Laura, I received a copy of the email you sent to Jen Riffle wrote, which mentions the Three Bears Building. I am shocked and in complete disbelief of the claim she has made about your building. They are blatantly false and I have no idea where she has come up with these statements. No one has contacted me regarding any of this information. I can assure anyone who wants information that I can give them accurate evaluations of one of the best-built and maintained buildings in Basalt. First of all, we have two, not one-stated HVAC system, on the roof of the building, one for each floor. There has never been a smell problem with this building since I've managed it. That goes back to 1996. There also has never been an issue with sound between upstairs and the first-floor spaces. Our rental percentage has been 86%, except when negotiating with Mike Scanlon for the purchase of the building as a new location for Town Hall. We didn't want to enter into any long-term leases, so the building could change hands easily. The same thing has been done while negotiating the sale of the building to Mr. Jack Peace. We did give space in our town planning group and the design center rent-free as a gift to the TOB, and that should be, not be counted as vacancy. It is my understanding that the prospective purchaser of the Three Bears Buildings plans to operate a retail marijuana business downstairs and reside in the upstairs residential unit himself. Therefore, there will be absolutely no conflict or any issues that are referred by Ms. Riffle in her emails. I cannot comment on the taxable income from such a business, but my guess is that would be substantial and one of the largest tax contributors to the town on an ongoing basis. I am sorry if this has affected your application. I hope this helps clear up any misstatements with the real facts. Rick Hayes, Manager, Three Bears Building, Basalt. I've attached other things to this that shows that this has been an active ordinance in process, really for the last three months, but since June 24th. Ms. Riffle has exhibited enough behavior without integrity that I believe that it's time that this council looks at her and recuses her from anything that goes forward on the zoning or marijuana within this town. Her behavior is special. And I'm going to leave it in your hands to take care of it. I, I could deal with the open meetings violation, Jen. I can't deal with a liar that sits on a legislative board. And you, my dear, have been doing things that are really inappropriate. Every meeting going forward, I'm going to stand up with another one of your emails and the same type of backup to show this community that you should not be seated. You're the chicken lady. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Can you have comments for items on the agenda?
For those in the room who don't know me, or members of council that don't know me, my name is Norm Clayson. I've lived here in this valley since 1962. I have three properties in the town of Basalt, all of which are part of our life savings, and one is the Three Bears Building. This email, this email really caught me off-guard. And I must say to all of you, or anyone that might have seen this email, how painful it is to read some of the things that were in it. As a result of that, I'd like to share with the council my feelings about the violation of the state and the home rule regulations by Ms. Riffle. I'm going to read part of this because quite frankly, it's so disturbing in many ways to me personally that I don't want to miss something. I don't want to just, you know that I get up and go by the fly sometimes, but I want to make sure that this is heard. First of all, I've never met you, Jen. I've never ever communicated with you. But what you have done to stop the sale of our building by stating these falsehoods is unconscionable and disgraceful, and it's based, I believe, on pure bias. When Jen, when you became sworn in as a new member of the council, you gave a speech that was probably one of the best that I've heard anyone, anyone, in a new office as a freshman, read regarding openness, fairness, honesty, transparency, listening to your constituents, working with the community, and so much more of that speech that impressed me. Please listen to it. Any of you, go back and listen to that speech when she was sworn in, and I think you'll be very impressed by what Jen said. Now, one of your constituents, myself, along with David and Jack Peace, has brought forth a, an application to bring a business to the downtown, to the downtown core of old Basalt. Ms. Riffle and her other freshman councilmen are very much against this proposal. Ms. Riffle has gone against everything she promised in her speech to try to derail this application. In so doing, you have broken the Colorado State statutes as well as the Basalt Home Rule Charter laws. When I saw the emails in question, I was shocked and couldn't believe that this had happened. I could only ask why was this being perpetrated by you, Jen? Why did this email contain lie after lie? What happened to dealing with our application based on facts and reason, not personal bias, supported by all the inaccuracies in that email? This council, sometime back now, voted five to two to move us forward to P and Z in favor of this amendment. It was based primarily on the reasoning that alcohol and marijuana should be put into the same category. I believe that other things were mentioned that night based on the fact that to not do so would be discriminatory. Because I think we all know that alcohol is one of the greatest drugs that we all face in our nation. I don't want to get into the details of why alcohol has no regulations. We'll save that for another time. But I also want to say to Jen and to Katie, who voted against this, that it's your right. I understand that. What's not your right is to do what you have done, and for that, we ask that you recuse yourself from voting on this issue. Sorry, I'm really emotional about this. Voting on this issue. Jen, you should be ashamed of yourself for this. Thank you, council, for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clayson. Other comments for items not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
First, please, please clarify for me what is, or is, oh, my name is Leonard Lutomsky. I'm a resident of Basalt, living in the South Side area. Please clarify for me what is and is not on the agenda, you know, what I can and cannot speak about. Because what I would like to address is, you know, your several proposed developments in the South Side area. Is that an appropriate topic for me to address at this moment?
Some of that is on the agenda. It's coming up.
So, I can't talk about it?
You can talk about it then, when it comes up on the agenda.
But not now?
Probably not now.
Okay.
Well, he's here. He's here. Can he do it?
Well, yeah, exactly. That's not how it works. Can you stay for a little while?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Also, for who's understanding, if we have a spread out of the record, where people are commenting on different things, it's very difficult. If we ever have to put the record together on the matters that are on the agenda, it's much more difficult than if we have the recording and all coming in at that designated point on the agenda. It makes a difference.
Yes, Mr. Stevens.
Hi. I'm Rick Stevens, Basalt.
I just wanted to let you know, we had a really good meeting, I think Jen mentioned it, with, with Chris Romer from the Vale Valley Partnerships last Thursday, Wednesday. And they're looking to mobilize this part of Eagle County to support the three, three tenths of 1% sales tax. So, we've reached out to Chris and we have two opportunities to have a meeting at the library on October 11th or 17th. So, we're in the process of setting that up. They were looking for champions on this side and a few of us have stepped up. I think Kathy Click is interested in that and especially Pitt County and also Dana Farrell from Rafta, I think her name is. Jen was there. So, there'll be a citizens group that will start to promote this and any support you might want to throw our way would be helpful. So, just thought I'd let you know. Yeah, thank you.
Any, any other citizens for comments not on the agenda? Okay.
Sure, I do.
Okay.
I just, I'm, I'm Herschel Ross. I fixed teeth up the street.
Herschel, you know you're not on council anymore, right?
I'm not? Hey, I'm missing Tuesday night football tonight. And don't say there's not, because there's going to be if there isn't already. The, no, I wanted to talk to you about trying to get a bond issues passed. Anytime you ask the voters to reach in their pocket for, for extra tax dollars, there's a big trust me involved. And it should be a sacred trust because our taxpayers work really hard for their money and they want to be assured somehow that is, it's being spent on necessary things and well. And so, we start with a scorecard for how we trust the town council. Well, I was reading through your, your bond issues and one, there, and I know that you worked hard on this, and it didn't work out, but there's no choice for raising funds to develop the two-and-a-half-acre parcel that we already own along the river and that can only be used for a park. There's no choice. If you want to improve the park according to the bond issues, from the vacant lot that it is now, you have to buy the land from the RF CDC. There is no choice not to buy the land, which raises a trust issue because the arguments that I've heard, you know, from some really good friends and patients and all, are that, one, we'd have more control over it. That's implying that there's this big hole in our land use code, that a developer could come in and do something to our land that we don't want them to do in our town, which after four years of working with this land use code, I don't see it. But, let's assume just for the sake of argument that that's true, that there is more control if, because there's a problem with our land use code. Doesn't cost $2.9 million to beef up the land use code. Be a lot easier way to go. And the other thing is, if you add up all the money spent, if both 2F and 2G, is it 2F and 2G? Jackie, thanks. If you add them up, it's almost $9 million, which is a lot for a town our size. But, if you look on the other side of this wall, at what is currently being proposed by a planning of zoning and by our post citizens, a committee that has been priced out at $8.5 million. So, what is $9 million getting you? So, the question is, for this $5 million plus that is 2G, what do we get? We don't know. Big trust issue. If you want this to pass, you better get new maps up there that show what you can do with $5 million, because it can't do that. And that's a little misinforming as far as the, as the bond issue. And again, it's chipping away at the trust issue. And the other thing is, I have brought up and others in the community are concerned, where's the maintenance money for this big new park? And on the ballot, you have something that increases the percentage of post money that can be used for maintenance, excepting, there's no new money there. This is robbing Peter to pay Paul. And so, what it's saying is that more of the same money can be used for maintenance, but all the other things that post wanted to do for the town and is planning and is doing master planning for, isn't going to have the money now because it's going to go into maintenance. So, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, which makes me wonder about the fiscal responsibility that is cited as a reason that the town is going to support these things. The last thing that makes me a little nervous about having trust in the town using my money correctly, because I pay taxes, as most of us do, is, is not only has this council tried very hard to get rid of Mike Scanlon, but they have, these trumped-up allegations that, that have no substance, to deprive him of his severance pay that was in the contract that the town signed with him, which brings up thoughts of vindictive vendetta and other rumors that are going around town. That doesn't help your trust issue. So, this is going to go to court. And it's going to be more of a mess and more expensive for the taxpayer than the police chief fiasco that we had four years ago. And you're going to send, you know, poor Tom into court and he's going to have his hands again tied behind the back, but the burden is going to be on the hands again tied behind the back, but the burden is going to be on the taxpayer. So please, if you want these things to pass, you know, you've got to work harder at it, because on my scorecard, the trust issue isn't doing so good. Now, if you think any of this made sense, those of you that are here or watching on the TV, tell your friends, tell your next-door neighbors, because it's not going to make the paper. Thanks for your time.
Any other comments for items not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council members. I'm your state representative, if you live in Eagle County, and not if you live in Pickin, the Pickin side of Basalt, Diane Mitch Bush. And I'd spoken with the mayor about, very briefly, giving you an update. I provided a handout for the council, and rather than go through that, I just want to highlight a few things that happened this past year, because I think we're going to see them again in 2017. There was a budget ploy, when we got into the final part of the budget, to remove all of the funding from the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment for air quality control. We, of course, killed that and brought those monies back, but we certainly need to keep our eyes open for that. As some of you know, I'm the vice chair of the House Transportation Energy Committee, and in that committee, we see both renewable energy and energy efficiency bills. We also obviously see transportation bills. One of the bills that came over from the Senate that we very hastily killed was a bill that would have removed all the faster funding for transit, which would mean that Rafta would be impacted, bus staying would be impacted, et cetera. That may come up again. We also saw an approach, which I've talked with Gary Tenenbaum about, that has made funding for bicycle facilities partisan. It should not be, but again, I am hoping that we can bring people together a little more on that issue, provided I get reelected in the next session. The other issue that I know many of you are concerned about, and I've been talking with some people ongoing about, is I, Representative Hamner, who of course represents Pickin County, among several others, and Representative Rankin, who is our Republican friend who represents Carbondale and Garfield County and several other counties, ran a bill this year called House Bill 1336. It's described on your handout. Essentially, it was a way of looking at the very high health insurance premiums that we have by suggesting to the DOI, not suggesting, requesting of the DOI and statute, that they do a study of a single risk rating region for the entire state. That study shows some quantitative data that I thought were very interesting, but did get reported in the press, and among those quantitative data were that, would we have gone for a single risk rating region, our premiums in Region 9 would have gone down by 22.3%. However, the Division of Insurance decided that maybe that wasn't the best way to deal with it, so we demanded a stakeholder group. The stakeholder group is us West Slope representatives, Senator Donovan, some West Slope County Commissioners, all the major insurance companies, hospitals here such as Valley View and Vale Valley Medical Center, and a number of other stakeholders. We've met once, our next meeting is next week, and we have a variety of questions that the representative from Anthem is going to be answering, and so I will try to keep you and everyone who wants to be updated, updated. If you want to get my newsletter, go to my website, which is on the back of this, or just email me, RepDianeHD26, which is right here, or call me. And so I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I didn't want to take up too much time.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
You bet.
Diane came down from Steamboat. Thanks, we really appreciate your visiting us specially, and I know it's a long way, so thank you.
I'm your employee. We love it. Thanks, Diane. Okay. Is there any more comments for items not on the agenda? Good. Okay, thank you very much. So moving on to our business items, our first item is council consideration of appointment of interim town manager. And we spent some time in session, talking to Ron Miller, this is Ron Miller right here, to talk about his requirements for a contract that we all came to agree on, and the concept of appointing him as our interim town manager until we find a full-timer. So Ron, would you like to come up here to the desk, just so you're not just part of the audience? So we had a pretty long conversation, and we think we've come to a good agreement, and so I guess at this point, I would just ask if there's a motion.
Well, I think, no, after the public, there's any public comment?
Oh, yeah, is there any public comment regarding this, and then we will have our comments regarding this appointment, interim town manager. Okay. Yeah, Bernie.
Well, I have gotten to know Ron a little bit through meeting him in a small group setting, and then we had our discussion, executive decision, meeting here, and I'm quite convinced he's very capable, highly experienced, 40 years of experience with towns our size, but also with towns where they have 2,900 employees and a multiplicity of issues, and he's proved his staying power. He's no stranger to controversy. He brings a very strong background in financial management, which I look forward to very much, because I think we need to get our town moving in the right direction financially, and I think that he will add a valuable help to us.
Any other? Thank you.
Yeah, so let me just clarify why we're doing this, why we're even exploring hiring an interim town manager. One is to take some of the heat off our staff. Judy, you have done two jobs and done a remarkable job of it, and to offer support to you and to everyone else. We have a ton of really exciting, cool projects going on, and it's an overwhelming workload, so that's one piece of why we're doing it. I called Ron's references, and one of them was Sam Mamet of the Colorado Municipal League. I got the best reference I have ever received on a human being from Sam. He said that Ron was a kind person, that he was capable of having a calming effect on communities in turmoil, as we are. He is enormously competent in financial management. He would be able to help us with our budget and with capital planning, and that he was a leader from behind. He did not seek the limelight. And I honestly, I cut Sam off, and I said, "I got it. This is a good man." And just a last comment here is, the idea of bringing you on, and this is to town staff, is not to clean house or review you all, it is to support you. And this gentleman here is going to provide that kind of support. I'm very optimistic about his abilities, and I also think, in four months, the four months that we would bring you on, we're going to work you like a rented mule and try to get, try to get some serious work out of you that will benefit the town forever, including capital planning, five-year fiscal planning, and I think you'll have fun doing it.
I can't really add anything to that. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, is there a motion? Thanks, Auden.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the appointment of interim town manager, Ron Miller.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. There you be.
Well, I'll...
Thank you very much. Ron is going to report for duty on October 6th. He's got some family commitments that were already pre-arranged, so.
Thank you so much.
He's going to stay for the rest of the meeting. He don't have to stay there, though. The next item is council consideration to suspend the employee loan program per the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Bernie, did you want to?
Okay, I'll summarize it. The Finance Committee, which is composed of the mayor, Katie Schwerm, myself, looked at the employee loan program, and we ended up quite concerned that the procedures, process, and the way it might be applied could be quite uneven, and we suggest that the council suspend the loan program until it can be thoroughly reviewed, and we determine what direction we want it to go, and put in, you know, much more comprehensive policies guiding it. And I would say, I personally think this will be an issue we'll consider in our budget sessions, because it's a very expensive benefit. It can tie up tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars, take them off our books as far as reserves, and I think, you know, we can discuss that as part of that budget session. So that's our recommendation.
Okay, Gary.
Question is, did we authorize any funding for this program in 2016?
No, but we did prior, and we, there's still money in it.
Okay, so we did carry forward that money?
Yes, in a separate fund earmarked.
Good question, Gary. Anybody else have questions?
So I would just want to see us move through those procedures quickly, because if they're employees who need the money, we'd like to be able to provide it. I'm assuming that's the plan?
Well, the plan is, I would, it's up to the council when they want to review the whole policy. I, it's not what the finance, we just recommend suspending it until such time as the council was ready to do a thorough review. I personally want to wait until we consider it as part of the budget process.
I was just going to say, it might be something for the Finance Committee to look at first. Okay?
Sounds good. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mayor, I move that the town council suspend the employee loan program per the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Thanks, Bernie. Okay, second reading of ordinances. The first one is, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 21, an ordinance of the town approving amendments to Chapter 16 zoning of the municipal code of the town of Basalt, amending the community-serving commercial zone district, CSC, we call it, adding and revising definitions and other changes to Chapter 16 zoning in order to implement the our-town planning master plan amendment. Susan?
Okay, so we have two tons today, we're actually going to put other people on the phone, and this is one of them, and then later on, the resolution to 2G, we're going to put some on the phone. This is Don Elliott, and he was our consulting attorney that helped draft this regulation. Because this is a separate reading, and we would really like to walk out of here with a group, we're going to put them on the phone, if you have any questions that we have. We're not going to actually have it on part of the presentation, he's just going to listen, and then we have questions. Does that work further?
Can you clarify this?
I will do that. I will do it as soon as I put Don on. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Hey, Don, this is Susan, and I just briefly introduced that we were going to have you be part of the presentation, that you were going to be here to listen to the comments and any questions that were made.
Okay.
You know, everyone, this is the second public hearing on the CSC Zone District, and I think everyone has known that we've had a lot of meetings on this. We've had a lot of check-ins with P and Z, and this is really seen as a major tool in implementing our town planning process, which started really after the town approved the bond for the purchase of the Pan and Fork Mobile Home Park. And it involves four key parcels. James can put those up on the map on the drawing. It includes the CDC parcel, the BCC parcel, the Lyons Park parcel, and Marino Park. The P and Z's worked real hard to give recommendations to the town council. We had a public hearing on September 13th, and, you know, I think what I will do, in just kind of the interest of time, is kind of summarize some of the key items that really came out of the council's discussion on the 27th, and also going over the changes that we're going to be presenting tonight. So there are really just a few takeaways from the meeting that we had at the last meeting. We, the town council, approved the ordinance on first reading and set the public hearing continued, and set the public hearing for this particular meeting, and the, you know, kind of key items were, one, kind of the anchor use concept. You know, overall, the town council was accepting of the anchor concept. They did have a little bit of a problem with the anchor use for the CDC property, but after further discussion, it was kind of concluded that as long as we took out that an anchor use could include a condominium hotel on the CDC property, that the council was okay. In fact, our kind of additional kind of takeaway was that no matter what, if it was an anchor use or a secondary use, you didn't really want to see a condominium hotel. So a lot of the changes that are in your ordinance have to do with that because of the fact that C2 uses were also permitted. You can see some additional times in the ordinance where we had to clarify that condominium hotels were not a permitted use on the CDC property. But they are a permitted use, and they're an anchor use on the other parcels, including the BCC property. And James, if you could kind of flip, there's an anchor use table, and you can see that we took off a condominium hotel for the CDC property. The other change on anchor uses was that the town council wanted to acknowledge that a town hall could be an anchor use on the BCC property.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh-huh.
So, just so I understand, what's the rationale for allowing a hotel but not a condo hotel? Can you answer that in quick terms?
Well, the dilemma is, you know, staff had, the P and Z and staff had recommended condominium hotel, but I think the town council members at the last meeting were, and maybe they should speak to it more than I, but my understanding was is that really, they were very concerned with residential uses on the CDC property, and even though, you know, we had rules and regulations that were kind of governing what a condominium hotel was, and had to look at the units alike and stuff, I think the council was still concerned that if it wasn't a viable use after it was built, that it could convert to a regular condominium use. So that's really a count, and maybe what we'll do is, why don't I go through my presentation, and then let's go through maybe the kind of remaining kind of questions that you have, but if that works for you, just so I can get through it. But that was the anchor use discussion. The next discussion was really the BCC property, and after, particularly after the public comment, the town council was concerned that we had barriers to redevelopment on the BCC property. And primarily, the main barrier was this idea that the P and Z had wanted to see buildings built up to Two Rivers Road or committed to before you could put a four-story building in the interior of the property. It really centered around that. We, staff, staff made an attempt, and we worked with Don Elliott from Clarion, in putting together the language that was in your packet. And I, you know, in retrospect, we were trying to kind of thread the needle between kind of where the P and Z was going and where we understood the town council going, and I think that we weren't really accurately representing really the feedback that we got from the town council at the last meeting. I met with Tim Belinski, who's representing the BCC owners, and we prepared the changes that you see on the yellow sheet. So there's really kind of...
How many pages do you have?
There's just three pages, there's three pages of text.
I got two.
There's front and back, and this page.
I know, it goes from five to eight.
Yeah, it's posted, because I'm only showing the changes that I made, not the entire ordinance. So on here, I'm just flagging that we've made a change on, and James, you can pull up maybe that table there. Here, we're just kind of flagging that it's in this area where the four stories is, and the footnotes that go along with that, where we're making the change. And then on the following page, you'll see the language where, right here on your sheet, everybody else has the yellow sheet. use, and you can see that on your yellow language. So, you're basically, it's just saying, yeah, you can build four stories in the interior of the building, as long as that building that you're building four stories, or the combination of buildings that you're building, includes an anchor use on the ground floor, and it doesn't have to be the entire anchor use. In other words, you could have a two-story anchor use. So, essentially, it's saying, yes, on the Clark's footprint, where the grocery store was, almost that entire parcel could go four stories, as long as there was an anchor use in that mix. Does that kind of clarify what that is? The other thing that we had done, you'll see on the thing that's called page eight, staff had added some language in the parking lot, really did more or less trying to get at this idea that, to soften that we were still gonna have parking between the road and the building. And I think that we, after trying to tweak this in a way that would work, you know, staff ended up concluding that we were hurting things more than we were achieving anything, and that the standards, as we had them in the existing code, gave us enough guidance, and what we really needed to do was see an actual application that we could work through, rather than trying to shrink wrap it to any particular scenario. So we're suggesting that some language that I had added regarding parking lot design be taken out, and that's what you see on page eight. Those are the changes on the BCC property. The other item that we spent considerable time talking about was residential uses on the Pan and Fork property, particularly, just affordable housing, and kind of a clarity of can affordable housing be built on the CDC property? And what the language in here does is it clarifies that for the CDC property, that you can have affordable housing that's attributable to the mitigation requirements on that particular parcel, and, and potentially, I'm, I'm saying it could be less, and you would decide that really in the land use application. So, and then there was just a couple other little changes that we had made. We expanded the definition, for example, of who an eligible applicant was, just to kind of clarify that after someone builds the anchor use, that the next guy in may not be a builder of an anchor use. And kind of clarified that kitchens could be permitted in the hotel, you know, every hotel that we have in town actually has small kitchens, and usually they're, in the old days, they were grandfathered in, and in the new days, they're usually allowed through the PED process, but here, we're trying to get around not having something in the PED process. So those are the major, those are the, the changes that we made. I guess our recommendation would, my recommendation would be, rather than getting too much in the weeds, unless there's something that you don't totally just understand, that we go ahead and get, take public comment, and then bring it back and discuss it. And hopefully, that we actually can leave here with action on the second reading, that's what we're looking for. So is that the end of the staff presentation? Yep. Okay, so this is a public hearing, we will open up this public hearing at 7:50, oh my goodness. Who in the public would like to make comments on this application, or it's not an application, zoning? Nope? Moved up on the microphone, Tam, I thought, maybe. Anybody have comments on this zoning? Wow, okay, we'll close the public hearing at almost exactly the same time. Council comments about the zoning. Jane?
I feel like I've been in the spotlight tonight, so I'll just run with it. One thing that I would love to see is talking about Councilwoman Grauer's request for models. It was brought up that physical or computer-generated models were acceptable, and I would like to strike, strike the computer-generated physical models for that scale of development, and the heights are very, very useful, and they have shown to be imperative on the CDC parcel, and so I propose that no computer-generated presentation of the scaling to be acceptable. Another one is, I really honor Plan, P&amp;Z's time and effort into, into the drafting of, this is a huge document, and they put a lot of time into it, and I just have concern about striking language about the parking and the pathways in compliance with landscape standards. I'm not, me personally, I wanna, I wanna hear what P&amp;Z's reflection is on this, because they've spent so much time on it, it just, it feels awkward to, to give that okay without hearing their input. And I also have a question about, I know that Basalt Mountain Lodge has a couple units with small kitchenettes, but I'm not sure about, does the Aspen Alt have small kitchenettes in all of their units? What's, right, so I'm a bit concerned about allowing small kitchens in all of the condo hotel units, because the point of having a hotel or a condo hotel is revitalization and the utilization of our local restaurants, and also, not a reduction in hotbeds, but keeping, keeping people coming through. So, that's my two cents.
More sense?
I have a question. I missed the last meeting, so maybe you all have hammered this out. But when it comes to the CDC parcel, west, anchor use as an art center, why are we not including art center as an anchor use on that parcel?
We brought that up last night.
We did, but there wasn't consensus to add it as an anchor use, I didn't think.
There was, I'm fine with adding it, but I didn't think-
Is it in as a use?
Is it in as a use, right.
But not an anchor use? I would consider adding it as an anchor use.
Can I just throw-
Yeah, go.
I think, if, I mean, this is a lot of information, tell me if I'm wrong, Susan. I think one of the things about the anchor use is it needs to be large, like 10,000 square feet, or has to comply with a lot of things, and I just feel like when you say you have to use, do one of these uses, I just am so fine with secondary uses, in that it wouldn't stop it from being there if it wanted to be there, but it maybe wouldn't have to be gargantuan if it couldn't afford to be gargantuan.
Mm-hmm. You know what I mean? It, it kind of takes away the ability to be small. But, that's just my perception of that. It doesn't, it doesn't take, you don't have, you can, you could still be a secondary, you could be an art center, if you put it as an anchor use, you could have it, a real anchor use, or it could be a secondary use after some other anchor use was there.
Oh.
So you wouldn't, you're not mandating that if there was a art center on there, it would have to be 6,500 square feet.
An art center could put in a 6,500 square foot brewery, and then as a secondary use be a 1,000 square foot art center.
Yeah.
Which kind of doesn't make sense to me. It seems to me like it should be added as a anchor use.
It's fine. Okay, so everybody thumbs up on when we do a motion that we're gonna add art centers as an anchor use on the CDC property? Okay.
Okay, I have one.
I have two. One of these, and tell, tell me again if this is all about anchor uses, but it says that a hotel must contain at least 30 guest rooms.
That's only if it's called, is the anchor use.
So it could, if you had a brewery that was your anchor use, and you had a 15 cabin, it could be permitted as a secondary use. Just to be the anchor use, it had to have a minimum of 30-
Okay, 'cause I keep thinking of Mark's example of Small Fishing Lodge, and also the, like the distillery in Carbondale, which the main use is the distillery, and it's only got three or four rooms, and let's say you had a, a use that was a big restaurant and had events, and you wanted to have room for wedding guests, for like 10 rooms. I just didn't want to be, once again, forced to have 30 rooms, because then you'd be happy to do some kind of weird parking-
Only if it wants to be, only if it is the anchor use.
If it wants to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, I guess I just, you know, and I would like to have this conversation, because Aden brought it up too, which is, what are the implications to a community of having a condo hotel versus a regular hotel? And, you know, we talked about this a little bit, and we had some thoughts about some potential negative impacts of having condo hotel instead of hotel. So, so for instance, tell me again if I'm wrong, but a hotel is hotbeds where you don't own the space, you can't own the space, in a condo hotel, you could own the space? Is this correct?
Yeah, I mean, Don, if I put you on the spot and had you explain what the condo hotel definition that we revised, could I do that? Are you there, Don?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there was, I have two or three thoughts about the comments that have been made so far. I guess I'll answer that one first. I think there was considerable concern on the planning and zoning provision that this not be a residential use, that, that, on that particular parcel, and it had quite a bit of discussion about the, how to clean up the definition, how to make it work, but the idea was that, I believe, if this turns into a second home development, that would not be the, generating the amount of spinoff business for downtown Basalt that we're looking for, and given the way we have a growing retirement group in the country, and a lot of money in that group, that that is what might happen, and so that on this particular parcel, they did not want to have that happen. I think it is, if you're asking my opinion, the opinion is, yeah, right now, if it is not constrained to be something that operates as a hotel, and has people coming in and out regularly, not just as rentals of second home units, but as, as basically people renting rooms because they're tourists in Basalt, from a hotel operator, that that's, if you allow that to happen, it will happen probably. So, it's the spinoff effect, and the fact that they want it to be a more active use, which led that discussion. If I could weigh in just on the art center comment, I think the thought was, everybody thought an art center was a good idea, the question is, on the bigger parcels, is it enough of an economic generator, again, to create the spinoff effect that you want it to have? And I, again, just will offer my opinion, and that opinion is, art centers don't spin off a lot of surrounding business. They, they are good gathering points, they're a community focal point, but they don't have a huge multiplier effect on what's going on around, especially at a small scale, and so, that, I think that was the thinking of the planning provision, basically saying, it, there's not, we're not anti-art center, we think on the bigger parcels, there is a bigger opportunity to create something with more economic energy spinoff potential.
Okay. Thanks, Don. I think, I know you were saying with regard to condominium hotel versus hotbed hotel, that we were, well, that I was only talking about the CDC parcel, and I was actually talking about hotel in general, even at the BCC parcel, just that we should maybe think about having these be hotels and not condo hotels, because the, it would create the same issues if it was at BCC, when what we're trying to get is either housing, which is full-time, or hotbeds, which are not. So, that's just my thought.
And, and, again, if I could just weigh in, and Susan, please correct me, my memory of those conversations is that, it kind of unfolded differently with the two property owners of the two locations, and that, once again, my memory is that the BCC input was, I don't think I could do a hotel on that site, it would have to be a condominium hotel, which is why it was allowed, but I stand by my earlier comments that there is a, I think there's a real difference between the spinoff effects.
Okay. You know, I think that if you wanted to look at the definition of a condominium hotel, it was more, you know, what the P&amp;Z was trying to work with was, we wanted to operate as much as it can like a hotbed, and look like a hotel unit, and be available to the public. So, if you went in your packet on page 51 of 153, that's where the rules were. In other words, it was something where all the furnishings are alike in the unit, that 50% had to be available to the general public, no unit could, owner could occupy the unit more than 60 days out of the year, no owner could occupy it for more than 29 consecutive days, and no owner could share their automobile on the site. So, there were these kind of layered rules that were trying to make it operate like the Hyatt in Aspen, so that it looked and operated like a hotel, and not like where you would buy something and furnishing it out how you want to, and hold the unit when you're not using it, et cetera. So, that was the P&amp;Z's kind of an attempt to kind of make it operate like a hotbed.
I think it's kind of an important one, I think we should, and since we're trying to get this thing passed, one way or the other, I would like to hear people weigh in on, do you care if it's condo hotel, or do you want hotel?
Do you care for both properties?
I'm not, I mean, I'm, for, well, right now condo hotel is off CDC, and so the only remaining possibility is BCC, correct? So I guess it's everywhere.
Yeah, I'm concerned like P&amp;Z about putting a condo hotel on the Pan and Fork property to the west, that it, if it doesn't pan out economically beneficial to the owner, they could dissolve that management structure, and then the individual owners, they would be individual condominiums. So I would-
I think they already fixed it on the CDC property, it's the BCC property.
The BCC, I have no objection to being a condo hotel. If it ends up being residences, I still think, I don't think it has as much traction to a quote retiree, and I think they would use it, they'd be here, they would generate. I'm personally okay with it.
I have two, I think BCC is a complicated parcel, and we should keep it as open as possible. I don't think that's what's gonna end up there, but I think I'd rather keep it open.
I'm fine with it as well, because of the definitions that are in here with the 60 day out of the entire year and 29 consecutive days.
Is that locked in regardless of ownership? Okay. Are you?
I'm good, and I'm good with the condo hotel. You don't mean open as in open space, you mean open for development.
Yeah. Open as a possibility here.
Correct.
Okay, all right, was there anything else hanging out here that? Anybody?
I do support my request that a physical model be produced.
And the only reason I allowed an option, because I have found, for example, the models that we had, the computer models that we had in, for example, in Willett's, when you look at a real picture and you look at the computer vision, they're very, very useful. And I, I just had it as an option. You could, you could elevate it instead of the town planner, be the town council can waive the physical model. More I was thinking of, 10 years from now, when, for example, you have, maybe the BCC property's already built, and someone is adding something to it, the model is long gone out of the back of the room, do you really want to try to build to that scale, or would you accept the model? And I was just trying to be flexible.
Well, I think if you feel that the computer-generated models are even more helpful, or very helpful, then it should be both that are required.
Aden Schindler. I think he was pointing at you.
I was pointing at you.
I just think, one goal is to not make the development process too onerous and require too much, and the, the computer models I've seen are incredible. You can walk through them, you can fly through them, and I think-
And I was just trying to be flexible.
Well, I think if you feel that the computer generated models are even more helpful or very helpful, then it should be both that are required.
Auden Schindler. I think he was pointing at you.
I was pointing at you.
Oh. I just think one goal is to not make the development process too onerous and require too much, and the computer models I've seen are incredible. You can walk through them, you can fly through them, and I think if, I think if that is an option, it's okay with me to have a non-physical model. They're great. So they're in some ways better than physical models.
I deal with computer-based models all the time and I agree with Auden's. You know, this was helpful, but this was for a large deal, and I think council can always ask for that on a development application, that's a large deal. I don't want it required on everyone because I don't think it'll be very helpful on a smaller piece. So I'm okay with both.
Okay. We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Anything else? I know it's getting...
Did we, did everybody weigh in on keeping seven? That's what Jen said, keep seven, don't strike it out.
Okay.
Is that what you said, Jen?
What?
And just as a clarification, yes. That language actually came from me, not the P and Z. Does that make a difference? So it came after your last hearing. It came from me and I was just trying to respond to...
Yeah, that wasn't P and Z.
Yeah, it wasn't from P and Z.
Yeah.
So where are we on that?
Or you want to...
We can deal with that once the application comes in, can't we?
Right, yeah. We can, I'm okay with striking it if you created it and it didn't come from P and Z.
Yeah, it didn't come from P and Z.
Right. Okay. So, and just to remind everybody again that this is just one option for an applicant. They can still use underlying zoning, they can come in with the PUD if this isn't working for them. So for anyone who cares about these things out there, are we pretty well set on this?
Yeah, I just thought, we're going though with adding the art base as an anchor use?
Art center.
Art center, sorry. What did I say?
You said the art base, you're pretty specific.
Okay. Is that, that was the only one I had a question on. So I think we're ready for a motion. And I think the motion would be to accept the CSC Zone District with the changes on the yellow pages and adding an art center as an anchor use on the CDC parcel.
So moved.
Got it.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you. There you go. Take a deep breath, Susan.
Gary, I guess.
What?
You made the motion.
I made the motion.
Does she remember?
No.
Are we good to keep going, guys, or do we need out for a second?
Keep going.
Okay. Thanks, Dawn. I'm going to close you off.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dawn.
Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Dawn.
This is the first step in a long journey.
I'm going.
Are you going to go? Okay. The next item is Resolution Forty, a resolution of the town approving a pre-application agreement with Habitat for Humanity regarding the Habitat for Humanity-re one school district housing proposal on the Basalt High School property. James?
No, Ron Miller.
Ron Miller.
Oh, Ron Miller. Thank you, Ron.
This is a resolution that would approve of a pre-application agreement with Habitat for Humanity to process an application for approximately twenty-six, twenty-seven local housing units behind high schools. At the last meeting, the council had a presentation of the concept, and the council had a discussion about whether the council was interested in entertaining the potential to change the urban growth boundary to accommodate the high school property, and the council appeared open to it at the last meeting. So as is our standard process for more significant developments, the first step is to do the pre-application agreement, which was previously called the pre-development agreement, we've changed the name. Basically, what it does is it establishes Habitat as the applicant on behalf of the school district. It establishes that town staff will work with the applicant to set up a process and a timeline, and then it establishes that the town may contract with financial consultants to review the project and the financial impacts on the town if we need to. And finally, it establishes that there's no obligation on the part of the town to approve the development application, just to consider processing it. Staff has the applicant here, we've got Scott Gilbert from Habitat. Scott, you have any additional comments?
Well, I just want to make clear that that old grocery store that used to be in the middle of downtown DCC is still being occupied by the restorant, we're not dead yet, so.
Oh, sorry, Scott.
So I'm here, I think James told me I'm here to answer questions and not to say too much, and Jackie told me last time not to talk much, so it went well, so I'm going to follow that direction. Happy to answer any questions. We're excited to be here, we're excited to keep this moving along, and if that's appropriate, I'll just take questions.
Staff would suggest taking some public comments because we did have comments outside interested in this.
Okay. So do you want us to do that now?
Do it.
You can ask questions first and then...
Okay. Does anybody have questions before we go to public questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, now.
It's a process question. And it's related to Dana Delibetta's letter, and it's the final page, and it is in the top block on the right, and it says, "It could conceptually be approved via state process due to the underlying land ownership." You probably all talked about this at last meeting, but I was not here. Can you please explain that?
Yeah, typically, when a school district or other agency such as a school district is proposing a development application, they could potentially be exempt from local jurisdiction regulations. In this case, we have a water service agreement and an annexation agreement with the high school. So we felt it important to work together to evaluate an application through the Town of Basalt's review. I'm sorry? Yeah, sure.
Katie, I want to weigh in if I can. You know, one of our mottos at Habitat is building homes, building hope, building community, and it's really important to us to do a project that's a collaborative project with people. You know, we seek out volunteers, we seek out donors, we seek out the homeowners to help build the homes, and the idea of going with a state route would be completely counter to the kind of philosophy we have. You know, if Basalt doesn't want to do this and doesn't want to partner, and Pickin doesn't want to partner, and the school district, we wouldn't want to do that. So it's really meant to be finding a good collaborative solution that everyone's as happy as possible, so that a state route wouldn't make a lot of sense to us. So that's sort of how that came up.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
But if for some reason, if the Town of Basalt comes up with certain regulations and expectations, you don't have to honor them.
Well, they do if they want water.
Okay, so, there we go.
Water is overrated. Water and sleep are overrated. We're not looking to do an end around, that's not the purpose, we're coming here.
And I...
No, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wanting everything out there so we're fully understanding of...
I mean, that was on the table, and you know, we talked to the school district, it's never a serious consideration to go that way.
Right.
I think someone in the last meeting had commented about, I think Jackie, it was you, that schools can do what they want, right? But that's not the kind of game you want to play.
Others? I just have, this is a really general comment, and it's not even really regarding this particular thing, but we spent about four years denying almost all pre-development agreements because for some reason it didn't feel right. And so I had a thought, because to me, what we have done here is just rename a pre-development agreement, and my memory of prior to pre-development agreements is we've just had resolutions. And so I'm wondering if this council wants to think about, instead of having language that says this council approves a pre-development agreement and then goes on with exhibits and et cetera, if we would change that language to the town council direct staff to enter into a review process? Because every time we circle back on these pre-development agreements, whether they're called this or not, there's been a bad feeling. And honestly, all we're doing is asking staff, or what we should be doing is asking staff to enter into a review process with an applicant. And it should just be a resolution. It is, it's called a resolution, but it's still being called a pre-development agreement, only a pre-application. So, I mean, it would be an easy change and it would give some of us oldies a level of comfort. I don't know, I'll run that by Gary first.
Oldies?
I meant me.
Oh.
I just, people who have sat here being very uncomfortable with that phraseology and the commitment that it sounds like it makes even though it doesn't.
You know, I think personally, we have to move past, you know, I'm, you know, I think it was for a specific thing, and I think we need to trust the applicants that we're dealing with.
Wasn't the applicants right, no.
I know. So I'm very comfortable with this because this shows a partnership with the town. This is the type of project, personally for me, I like to see the town involved in, so I'm okay with the pre-development.
And truthfully, the past pre-development agreements had language intermingled that was...
Correct.
Okay.
There's a big difference between development and application.
Yes.
True, there is. Okay, so, since we're just sending people on to work on this, are we good to go?
Do you want to take public comment?
Oh, right.
I would like to just comment that with other applications in the South Side area, it has been expressed to council and from the public, from residents of the South Side area, that the traffic is a major issue, and whatever mitigation goes, needs to occur from any applicant, it holds true to all applicants, and please keep that in consideration because we need to do that to ensure the quality of life for everyone in Basalt. Thanks.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also want to point out that we're integrating this into our urban growth boundary, and that for me, I mean, this is critical housing, it's important housing, but the urban growth boundary to me is very, very important. And only a project of this caliber would I ever consider manipulating our urban growth boundary for. And I also think we should, at some point in our very busy agenda schedule, discuss the urban growth boundary and what it currently is and perhaps what it should be.
Okay. So we can do, we can take more comments from us, but normally we listen to what public says first and then, so it's kind of gone the other way, so if you... Okay, so we are going to take public comment on this application. If you would like to make public comment, please come up to the microphone and say your name. Oh, you've waited all this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Leonard Consky.
I'm a Basalt resident, and I live in the South Side area. And my comments are applicable not particularly to the Habitat for Humanity proposal, but also, but actually I'm intending to address everything that's happening south, in the south. So if you feel this is an appropriate time for me to make such comments, may I do so? Okay. Okay. So I have two objections to all or some of your proposed developments in the South Side area. The first objection is personal, the second objective. First, I reside on Alexander Lane upon a very narrowly fixed income. I really can't move again. I'm stuck where I am. And my principal occupations are meditation, reading, and writing. Quiet and solitude promote those activities, noise and busyness hinder them. And you're proposing to make my development, my locale, far more noisy. You know, there will be construction trucks, earthmoving machinery, the cars and trucks of electricians, plumbers, et cetera, you know, going by, going by on the road that I overlook. So you're really going to make my environment significantly more noisy, which I'm not looking forward to. Among my other pleasures is taking a walk south to the Rio Grande Trail and then heading east, but my mobility is limited, so I actually can't walk very far. So the Stotz Mill development in particular may take away my ability to actually make it to a place that's serene, open, and, you know, free from housing. Furthermore, however much your traffic analyses may prove that a roundabout will improve traffic flow on South Side Drive, and I'm not in a position to, you know, deny those findings. Nonetheless, I will have to be, have to deal with more noise and more polluted air. So you're affecting me. So I'm not convinced that that should sway you, but I simply want to make this point. Secondly, to get to my last objection, I summarized it in a letter that's included in the agenda packet for this meeting under correspondence to the town. Its gist is that recent findings and fears of climate scientists are extreme, and if they're even marginally correct, then you should be focusing on sustainability, self-reliance, the preservation of agricultural land, very careful preservation of your water supply, rather than on residential or economic growth. Those should be your real priorities, if the climate scientists are even near right. So I won't hammer you with their findings because my letter, I believe, summarizes them fairly succinctly, but I believe that you should pay attention to their findings. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, council, whoever, oh, Bernie's left and he had something. Anybody else have anything on this?
There's one more that I'd like to put out there for just in general, the South Side developments in general. I'd like to toss it out there as a creative idea. If we're looking at the developments having access to mass transit, an issue that came up with the mini-storage application was the easement for a walking path and that there is not a connecting walking path to make it to the BRT and the new pedestrian underpass that will be completed. And as an idea, just to get interest in it, is what if the storage, the applicant for the storage, mini-storage unit that owns the land would provide the easement and, as I mentioned before, of sharing the costs of making community benefits in the area, if they collaborated with the building of the path? So that it wasn't all on Basalt Mini-Storage? If they provide the easement, then all developers pay in to create that path to ensure the safety of pedestrians and transit. Just an idea to put out there, start percolating.
Okay. Yes, Scott?
I can comment from Habitat's perspective. One, we're more than happy to do our fair share of whatever the costs are, the work is. You know, Briston Peterson's a board member, so, you know, I understand, he's got a Stotz Mill project in the air. So in that respect, we're happy to do our fair share financially. The other thing is, one of the things we do is, you know, we rely on a lot of volunteers to build our homes, and so we're very good at galvanizing people to get together and do things, so it ends up building a path or something like that. You know, Amy French is our volunteer coordinator, and she's been in Basalt, I think, nine generations and knows almost everybody, and is a pretty persuasive recruiter of volunteer talent. So any of those kinds of projects, we're happy to participate in. You know, we did the Bandshell in Lyons Park several years ago and had some good volunteers involved in that, so we're happy to do that. Thanks.
Anybody else? Yes, Gary?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Resolution number...
Forty.
Forty. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
I'm getting tired.
We only have you for thirty more minutes.
Do we need a quick break, or are we good?
No, we only have you guys for thirty more minutes.
All right, all right. I can't leave, he will. Okay, we'll make it quick. Resolution forty-one, a resolution of the town approving a process for the arts campus at Willets to develop an arts campus on the town-owned property known as the Willets Performing Arts Parcel. Susan?
To be held a resolution in progress, it's really essentially replacing... We have a resolution in progress. It's really essentially replacing the pre-development agreement that we had, which expires at the end of the month. So this is kind of a new format. It's really just trying to outline what do we need to do to move, to move the performing arts campus at Willets forward. And I think everybody here knows that, you know, we had some issues about the costs and billing that was involved with TACAA. We've had a whole series of, of meetings with representatives of TACAA, either with staff and individual meetings. And I think that, and what we've really done here is really develop a process that both parties, I think, can be comfortable moving forward. What we have is, it addresses how we expect payment to work in the future. It addresses this independent fiscal feasibility study that will be done and kind of outlines that our expectation is, is that the council will have this independent study. It's kind of setting a target that we'd like that to be done at the end of January. And it's also saying that we will determine the feasibility of TACAA at a public hearing and that would be done by the end of May, actually May first, two thousand seventeen. We have a lot of representatives from TACAA, I actually think most of them maybe still in the hallway, are they in here? But we have Ryan Honey, who's the managing director of TACAA. I know he wants to just say a couple of words and acknowledge the other people that are, are here for TACAA. So Ryan, do you want to come on?
Sure. I just want to take a moment just to say thank you. On behalf of myself, my board, and the community members that have come out and the others that I've talked to, I really appreciate the time and the energy that this body has put into this project and look forward to working this process that's outlined to bring more performing arts to this community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Is Ryan kind of speaking for everybody? Okay, okay. Oh, thank you.
We know you're short on time.
Where are we? We're behind, I'm sorry. Okay, so Susan?
So we're actually just, no changes to the, to the, um, resolution that's in front of you. We're just looking for a motion, we're just looking for approval of the resolution tonight.
Let's see if we have staff comments, I mean staff.
Whatever we are.
The other people. Council comments?
I have some questions.
Yes ma'am.
From a financial perspective, D in the resolution, as of July twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, sixteen, the arts Rita has approximately seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, that's total, that's not fifty percent, that's...
No, that's the fifty percent. That, that's, that's the arts portion of the Rita.
Okay, so that is fifty percent of the total that is sitting in that.
Well, we've spent the other part. So it's not, the other part's not sitting there.
But she's talking about the amount.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, there's a...
I'm sorry.
One, okay, there's a, a Rita.
Right.
From my understanding. And there's fifty percent that's okay for funding Willets. And there's fifty percent that's okay for funding other arts organizations. Is the seven hundred and fifty-nine the whole amount or fifty percent?
Okay, the seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand is the fifty percent of the Willets Rita one that can be used on the arts parcel at Willets for an arts center.
Okay, so that money is clearly delineated for Willets, it's not for any other purpose, cannot be used for any other purpose.
It's for an arts center on the town art, arts parcel.
Got it. So there's like a whole other seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
That's where you're, you're going to get confused on that because the town had been collecting that money and the town has spent that money. So for example, the roundabout at Willets, our, the town's contribution for that was used there, it was used on the underpass, it was used on some of the traffic calming in Willets Town Center. So there's not a separate pool of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, you know, sitting there that the town hasn't spent.
But there was.
There was. There, there was one.
And it's gone. So it's not like I can think, oh, this is fifty percent and there's another pot of money that we could use for other arts uses throughout the town.
So there is another, there is another arts Rita, okay, there is another arts Rita to be confused, you know, there is another art Rita that isn't to the magnitude of this, that's on Socres Meadows Parcel for C and D where homes that were over a certain price point had to pay. And that money you can use for art in the town of Basalt.
Anywhere, anywhere. In the town of Basalt. Right, right, right. Do we know what that balance is?
It doesn't have this kind of magnitude in it, but...
Okay. Um, so I have additional questions related to money. Um, it looks like in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, if we combine the amount of money that was appropriated via the budget for TACAA, we did a hundred and fif, a hundred in two thousand, wait, a hundred and thirty in two thousand fifteen and a hundred thousand in two thousand sixteen. So a balance of two hundred and thirty thousand, of which nearly fifty thousand was used in two thousand fifteen and right now about seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand has been used in two thousand sixteen. So of that money, is it twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars that's available? Or is it approximately a hundred and five thousand? Does it carry over? No carryover. So what? So they had a hundred and thirty that they could have used in two thousand fifteen and they used forty-eight thousand. And it's gone. No more, you can't use...
Well, it goes back in that restricted fund.
Right.
You're correct, there's not just a big pot of money that they can spend.
So Katie, when we were trying to think about how to go forward, okay, and what was reasonable in terms of how much money, it was a way of kind of getting where we thought was a reasonable path. So we weren't as, for that, there's a, a, some language in the resolution that says, okay, we feel comfortable that TACAA has spent up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of funds out of the Rita to, to, to do this part. So when you're thinking about that, don't, it, it might be helpful not to think so much like how much was spent of a hundred and thirty, whatever. It was just a way for us to get to what was reasonable. I mean, this is kind of the group think of what was kind of reasonable going forward so we can get to this point of does TACAA fiscally make sense?
But when considering just funding right now for whatever could come down for two thousand sixteen, we're looking at twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
That is what is in the budget.
Okay. So now my questions are related to language. So the Rita that I looked at months ago stated that it was to build and maintain a structure, I believe. But this, this resolution states to set aside to build, maintain, and provide an endowment for an arts and cultural center. Okay, that is recital B. Yes?
It's in the, it's in the cover.
Okay, and I'm not questioning that. My question is, if you go to then page three, item number one, it suggests that we pay operating expenses, including salary, benefits, and rent. And I can absolutely find no connection between building, maintaining, and providing an endowment with providing funds for salary, benefits, and rent. And I know I go back over this over and over and over again, but I have a serious problem with the language. It doesn't match up. It seems to me that the Rita is for hard costs, not for salary and benefits and rent and order traits. And that's what this money has been spent upon this year. And I don't know about previous years. So I have this major disconnect where I have a really hard time funding when the intention of that Rita is for an endowment per this recital, item B.
Is this a legal question?
Well, um, I, I don't, personally, I think it's open to interpretation, but in my opinion, I don't know how you build, maintain, and provide an endowment unless there are people who get salaries. I think it's broad enough to allow that. Now that said, you've got a pot of money, fifty percent of that Rita, you can, you have the discretion to decide how it's going to be spent. But, and so you're not required to use it for any one particular aspect of the funding for the arts center. You could say, we're going to pay to build it, but we're not going to pay to maintain it. And we'll use all that fifty percent to build it. Because it's, um, at your discretion how the, how the money actually gets spent. But you have an identified pot. To me though, as a practical matter, I don't know how you get any of those things done unless there are people getting paid.
But that would be the obligation of a nonprofit. And the obligation of a nonprofit is to figure out how to exist. And we as a town do not have funds to provide this level of funding for many years beyond. And so, I mean, endowment's purpose is to make sure that an entity exists in perpetuity. That's what an endowment does for a nonprofit. And if that's what we're funding through Rita, then in my mind, you cannot provide seed funding and soft costs for something that doesn't exist.
Well, I don't know how you deal with an endowment unless you have administrative people to run the endowment.
But I feel like that is the nonprofit's obligation to get to the point where they need an endowment.
Well, it's not going to cost the town any more money, one way or another.
Okay, can I interrupt, guys? Hold on. Here's my thought, it's just an idea. I know that this fund has been kind of loosey-goosey, quite honestly. And I also know that there have been meetings and verbal commitments between town officials and TACAA, basically committing that through two thousand seventeen, we were going to say, it's been airy-fairy, but we need to make this commitment to you to get through X amount of time, two thousand seventeen. What I would like to see us do, and this is from spending quite a bit of time in Judy's office, is basically identify, take the rest of, the remainder of that money and say, this, break it down into line items and say, this is for construction and this, I mean, kind of say in advance, even though we know it's dedicated to this parcel, what that money can be spent for. Because right now, we're not really, I don't think, in a position very much to be trying to make up these line items after the fact, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because I agree with you that the language seems like this. I agree with Tom that you cannot put those things on the ground without staffing. So I would like to know if, if we are okay with the verbal commitments that we have made to date and with basically line iteming that fund.
And you, the two of you would know this, I suppose better than I, but one way of looking at it would seem is, you know, it's going to take a pot of X amount of money to build, maintain, operate, run this center. Whether our money, whether the town's fifty percent Rita goes towards one particular aspect of that project or not, it just means they have to shift the other funds to what we're saying you can't spend it for. So does it make a difference?
But what if TACAA, as it currently exists, cannot follow through on their promises? Then we have spent money that could have been used by another organization that created a new nonprofit to build the structure that has been promised. If TACAA, hypothetically speaking, for some reason can't get this thing to work, we have nothing left for the next entity because we've spent the money on salaries, benefits, and rent. Which, again, I go back to the language and the purpose of that language would be to get an arts center and keep it going to the level that this Rita can support.
Well, like I say...
Tom, just a second.
I'm sorry.
We're going to let her go.
There's the cut on it too. So Susan brought up the point of what is reasonable. And as a, what I want to know is what is reasonable startup support from the town of Basalt for a startup? Is it, I think two years of startup funds are reasonable for a, a nonprofit to then be able to build the foundation, to create the funds, to pay for their administration, to then be actualized and crystallized with economic feasibility to support themselves, to prove the capabilities of such a group to build a seven million dollar, um, building. And it's just, I think that's what it comes down to, is the policy within the town of Basalt. I've never heard, and there's going to be many instances into the near future, that we as a council have never heard, I personally have never heard about the verbal promise to TACAA to fund them through two thousand seventeen. I can't, right here at this moment, I can't say, yeah, I'm going to go on that verbal agreement because who knows what other verbal agreements, it's a slippery slope with, with other entities that are going to come and approach us. And this is what our duty as the town, as elected town councillors of Basalt is to ensure that the funds created by the taxpayers are being properly utilized. And so what it comes down to is the policy is what is the reasonable time for startup support from the town of Basalt? And...
One more, one more, one more thing. The other thing is this money is tied to the financial feasibility study, correct?
Correct, and Bruce has time except in a way we have other time.
So I'm, I have enough confidence in Bruce and I hope the council does, that if he comes back and says, yes, they can make this work by May or whenever his deadline is, or they can't make it work, we don't fund them anymore if he says they can't make it work.
Well, I feel that there is an obligation to fund them through two thousand sixteen, it's in an adopted budget. I also agree that we need to move forward some type of process that's paid for, which you're referencing, Bruce's time through the Rita, not through our general fund. Those are things that I can accept. I still don't know if salary benefits and rent are okay in two thousand sixteen, but I will not support it in two thousand seventeen. I want, like you're describing, I want everyone on the same page. Because we're here because we haven't been on the same page.
Yeah.
You can do it that way. It's not prohibited. You could say, we're just going to spend our, this fifty percent is only going to get spent for hard construction costs. You have the right to say that. I'm only saying it can be interpreted otherwise, if you want to interpret it that way.
Gary?
I mean, through this whole discussion, I wasn't here for that initial discussion. But my biggest concern about this was that this was an approval in the Willets development for an arts center. The Rita funds were put away for this. We started down a path with TACAA. And the path is, you know, kind of starting to clear up. I think the path was not very clear, it wasn't very clear to me that they really even had a financial plan, thank you Bernie. And, you know, you sometimes have to muddle the water before it starts to clear. The reality is, is I feel that we started down a path with TACAA. And the path is, you know, something I would like to see. I think they've responded pretty well to a financial plan. I think, you know, reading all of the stuff in the, in the RITA and everything else, I mean, I, I agree with Tom, it is very unclear. And it can be used, we could probably legally get away with using it for a lot of different things as long as it goes towards the creation of an arts center. So I don't want to get too muddled now. I would like to get moving forward and then hit this date of May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. I would like to get moving forward and then hit this date of May 31, 2017, and see where we're at. Because I would like to see that by that time, that we have a financial analysis. And, you know, also, the reality, too, is for TACAA, is if they get at least this shot from us, they can start fundraising and see if they can actually do this. So I think we're protected because by that date, we'll already have a financial analysis from our own consultant that's not being paid for by a general fund. So, you know, I don't, I, I really believe that we started down a path. I don't care, like Jen, about the commitments that were made or anything else. I would like to make a commitment for the art center. I, I've gotten very clear from, you know, the supporters of this, this is not going to compete with art-based, this is going to be complementary, this is going to be complementary to a lot of things that are going on in this valley. I was very concerned at first how big they wanted to go, but they're doing a financial analysis, and we're going to get to see it, and we're going to have our financial analysis on it. I'm, I'm okay with personally moving forward with this and seeing where we're at. By mid-next year, we'll have a pretty clear picture, I think, if we can make it happen.
My one last question for you is, is there language in here that you could change-
That would make this more palatable for you?
Well, I will not accept any type of language that indicates some type of promise for 2017. I want to go through our budgeting process before I make any promises or any language related to that. And I'm just sticking to it on, I disagree on the use of this Rita, and I don't think it's appropriate for salary benefits and rent.
Um, one thing I would kind of like to see in here is where it does say this through January, or through May of 2017, that we, we could add language that says, basically, based on budget approval or the budget process.
Yeah, we do have, we do have language in there, Jackie.
Because we can't commit in a resolution. So there is language in here that, that, but we'll make.
Well, so-
Yeah, this resolution does not appropriate funds. It's number six on page five. This resolution does not appropriate funds, obligate the town to approve a budget favorable to TACAA, grant a lease, or grant any land use approval. Those actions be considered in accordance with the town charter and municipal code. So we put that in there, it's more a state, you know, this is kind of more a statement of what the overall intent, it can't, because you have to go through the budget process as a legal document.
Yeah.
So Bernie has some comments, but just really quickly, the, the taxpayers in Willets have, has put in money into this for ten years and have expected that this would come out of it. And I think what we're discussing today is continued financing to allow us to have comfort that this will work. I understand your concern, but I'm okay with supporting that effort to move it forward. And part of what gives me comfort is Bernie's been through the wringer on this and was no softie, and I believe supports that position, so.
Yeah, let me give some background. First of all, I made no promises and did not negotiate with the board of TACAA on behalf of the council. I don't have the power to do that. I did meet with them and the mayor. And thanks to the mayor, I gave it an open hearing, gave it a second chance. And I think through our lengthy meeting, I gained a level of comfort in supporting this resolution. As this reflects, much of our discussions and my concerns are outlined in the requirements, the financial requirements, and the due diligence that the outside financial consultant will perform on their proposal. So the other thing is that Judy and I met with Ryan and their new CPA, and he has scrubbed their financials. They had problems with their accounting and finances. They got off to a bad start. That has all been scrubbed clean, and we're very clear on a process that both the town and the donors can feel assured that will, there will be professional CPA attending the, all the accounting, and that all the dollars will be accounted for properly, and that there will be financial oversight that is necessary. Because this is not Willetts money, this is Town of Basalt assessment that, as it says, "We have the fiduciary control of and the ultimate disposition." And with those items that we looked at, I feel satisfied. And I've also worked a bit with Mr. Ryan Honey, and I've grown more confident in his experience and his ability. And we are on the same page as far as fiscal responsibility reporting and progress reporting, transparency to the city, its funding agency, which was not happening in its early months. And that is what upset me considerably. But that is, I think, remedied, and I think it's essential that Mr. Honey stay on and that his salary be paid. Because not only does he know the administration, he's an experienced fundraiser and has already gotten some commitments. And that is what, as far as we could, start from scratch. But this group of known, public-minded citizens has self-chosen to make this thing go forward. And I was pretty skeptical, but through meetings and, you know, pretty strong questioning, I'm convinced they are sincere, and that we should give them this $230,000 in funding to get them going. Because they're looking at raising another $5 million and then on beyond that. Because no performing arts center can make it on ticketing, no event center. They must have an endowment. You must have people in the community raising funds for that endowment. The city is not going to support it out of its general fund. The Rita tac, well, it's an assessment, is unpredictable and limited. It's not like in Aspen, okay? So these guys will be our partners. As per my request, they have totally agreed with our financial analyst looking at their $7.7 million plan for economic feasibility. And I've contacted Susan. Part of this is a parking study that will go in, very critical in the Willetts area, that whatever they build can be parked. If that costs additional money, we'll have to look at that. What I have said, and I see it implied in the resolution, is that this financial consultant will also build from the ground up, not only just do a due diligence on the $7.7 million structure, but build based on the information they get, what they think would be the most effective physical plant that could be supported. The, our, Bruce Kimmel, in his brief memo, questions whether an event center, it says a performing arts center and an event center is untested in the Roaring Fork Valley. That means you may have to downsize, or what I call right-size, and focus more narrowly on something. And we will know that by the time January, February rolls around, and we'll have public meetings and hearings and get the financial report. But I feel comfortable supporting this resolution. I think it moves us in the right direction.
Thanks, Bernie. Um, I think we should probably move on. I want to thank Katie, because quite honestly, I think we need a person, or two, or three, on a council who is, really takes a critical look at everything we do. And I think that's appropriate. And I guess at this point, we just need to have a motion and see how it goes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, let's see, what resolution? We're on 8B.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Eight-B on the-
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that the town council approve Resolution Number 41, Series of 216. Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? On favor? I oppose.
I oppose.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. So are we getting close here? Kind of. Okay. Resolution 42, a resolution of the Town of Basalt, supporting the passage of ballot issues 2F and 2G. Susan.
This is my last one. I'm going to put anybody on the phone. We have Paul Winder, who we're calling. Paul Winder, our bond attorney. So we're just going to put Paul on, and then I'll start my brief presentation.
I really haven't started yet. But I, just as kind of a brief introduction, this is a resolution from the Town of Basalt, supporting ballot issues 2F and 2G. And this is another, this is the last one, we're going to have another piece of paper that has revisions in front of you. It has 8C in the upper right-hand corner. The Fair Campaign Practices Act provides that the town, council can adopt a supporting resolution, like the one that you have in front of you. This supports our ballot issues 2F and 2G. 2F is the purchase of the CDC property, and 2G is for the park improvements. Just to kind of go over the recommended changes to the resolution, these were identified by Katie, Commissioner Counselor Katie Schwer. On the bottom of the first page, it was just a missing in, in reference to the agenda Katie had preferred that the word pro, progress be used instead of process in the first whereas on page two. And then there was an additional clarification on the second-to-the-last whereas clause. And the new language reads, "Whereas while ballot issues 2F and 2G are technically tax increases as defined under the Tabor, the town council believes ballot issues 2F and 2G will not increase property tax rates currently being paid by the town property owners based on the town's current assessed value, tax collection rate, and financial plan." Paul, do you want to add anything?
No, I only, I can only add that the Fair Campaign Practices Act provides that the town, it's just, we're doing a lot of things with the special campaign. One of the things that it does provide is for the town to pass this resolution, expressing its support and advocacy for both ballot issues.
Okay. Got it. So I guess that's, that's really staff's presentation. We're looking for a motion to approve the, the resolution as amended. Can I also ask, can you post this on the town's website? Is that okay, Paul?
So you can only, you can only distribute it through normal channels. So if you were going to post any resolution that way, then you can go ahead and do that. But if you wouldn't, then you cannot.
Okay, well, we'll think that through. I'll stop. On-
So on this, my position, I've been looking at this as a way for the community to weigh in on whether they want to do this or not. And if the community votes in support of it, we'll build a park. But if they vote against it, we won't. It's a referendum of sorts. So I don't think it's appropriate for the town to say, "Vote for it," which is what this resolution would do. Because I think there are good arguments on both sides of it. So I'm going to, I would oppose having this resolution happen at all. And I would vote against it.
I'm, I'm aligned with that.
So I have a question. So earlier, we voted unanimously, right, to approve or support the library? How is this different?
I support that because I think we should support the tax for the library, and I think the community should, in the same way that, for example, the 20% increase to post money. I think that's good for the community. This is different in that it's a referendum on how we ought to use that parcel, and I don't feel comfortable telling the town how to vote on that.
But you just did with the library.
Yeah, it's, it's not a referendum. The library isn't-
It is, it is a referendum. They're both referendums.
Well, what I mean is a community referendum, saying, "Where do you stand on this?" I'm telling the community, "I think you ought to vote yes on the library." But I'm not comfortable saying that on this decision, because I think there are way more pro and con arguments, legitimate pro, legitimate con. I think on the library, there are a lot of pro arguments.
Well, Paul, do you have anything to say about that? Because, I mean, you're telling us this is fine for us to do.
No, I think it's, you can do it. That's Paul saying-
He's voting no.
Oh, he's, oh, fine, okay.
I just wanted to bring up the point of citizen committee, or citizens' comments, and Herschel Ross stating the lack of trust, and that what I took away from his comment was that we needed to get behind what it is that we are putting on the ballot and doing, have been working towards. And this is, this is an example of that, of either we're behind what we're doing and you support it, or, it's just one of those open-for interpretation, lots of different ways to look at it, and-
He wanted us to clarify what we were doing. He didn't want us to just support stuff. He wanted us to say, "It's going to be X, Y, and Z if we do it." He wasn't saying, "Come on in and behind it."
Which is what we have been doing, no? And that's what the-
That wasn't what he said.
Yeah.
So people, there is some disagreement here on, on this council, which I am pretty disappointed because I have seen in past years when the council was divided on a referendum, that it, there wa, it was trouble. It was more troublesome, for sure. And, but that's just the way it is. So I still would like to see a motion on this, because it's in front of us, and I, I support it wholeheartedly, and I believe that the citizens have asked for those to be put on the ballot by the hundreds, and so.
Well, I, I have a question, maybe of Tom. We have already, and maybe of Paul, too, we spent three hours crafting this ballot language for the bond as a council, give and take, back and forth, until we got it. And did we not pass it unanimously? Was somebody absent?
I don't remember.
We did.
I think Aden wasn't here.
No, no. I supported it.
It doesn't mean we have to publicly say we're, we're behind the questions. The ballot language was approved, that's all.
Well, I would not have approved the ballot language if you didn't want this to go forward.
No, no.
No, let the people vote and make the decision, Bernie.
That's a critical point.
Okay, let's start, like, raising hands again, so we don't all-
No, we're civil.
Just raise your hand, please.
Well, you know, I, I have two different opinions. Number one, I do agree that it is a referendum. I've called it a referendum, and that the people should decide. In fact, I would call it a referendum with teeth, because there's a tax fight included in it. And people are aware of it, as they should be aware of it. And it provides a wonderful amenity and benefit. On the other hand, I have seen things fail, like the last park bond issue, because the council adopted it and it, that died. There was no letters of support, there was no resolution, there was no indication to the community that the council really wanted their support in moving this thing forward. So I guess I will have to support the resolution. I think even though we passed the resolution, it's just an indication of moral support, and that, of course, it's still a referendum, and everybody gets to vote it up or down.
Is that a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt, Madam Mayor, that we adopt Resolution Number 42, Series of 216.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. Further discussion?
All right. You know, to me, this resolution, you know, really supporting the passage of the ballot issues, was, to me, it's a step forward for this community. And to me, we worked on it really hard. This goes back to post, working on designs. This goes back to all the resolutions that we passed in the past. Don't appreciate Herschel coming up and making huge comments on, on the fact that we don't talk about this stuff. We talk about it ad nauseam. Ad nauseam, we've talked about this. And it's very clear what this community gets for this ballot. You know, it's, it is a referendum on the town, and it does do that. And I think if people would sit through our meetings, and it's really difficult, because it's nine o'clock, and I know Mark's getting fidgety because he wants to go home, and so do I. But the reality- But the reality is, is we're trying really hard to be transparent and talk about this stuff. We has, have had a ton of public meetings on this. We have run our staff nuts about the public meetings on this. So, we have talked about this to the point where I think it's ridiculous not to support this, because I think our community supports this. We, we did resolutions. You know, I don't care if everybody does, but the thing is, most of the thing is, we came to this incredible compromise, that I even compromised, that it's not all park, it's going to be development. I just said on it, I could see even a hotel, which I originally didn't want to see. But the thing is, I think a lot of the community is compromising on what this parcel is. I think as a Town Council, we need to support this. I think this is a great step forward for the town. And I really, truly believe that in 20 or 30 years, if you look to the future, this is going to be incredible. And so, you know, I personally feel that I'm definitely going to support this, and I'm going to do everything in my power to get this passed, because I believe it's a step forward for the town. Anyway, how to make my peace, because I'm just, I just feel that we need to move forward on these things, and not, and, and, hey, I don't care if you vote forward or not, but the reality is, is I just think we need to move forward as a town, and I think this does that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
No, I did, would somebody second?
I did.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Post.
Nay.
Okay. Wait, let's see.
Mr. Wilson.
Oh, Mr. Wilson. How about, is Mr. Wilson up? Does he, is his name I E C C?
Yeah. And Wilson's here, and actually, oh, we have Charlie Eckert also. Charlie wanted to sit up here, and he's showing his support.
Okay, let me, it's 9B.
Yeah.
It's 9B. Okay, can I just read this into the record real quick? This is first reading of Ordinance 27, an ordinance of the town repealing and re-adopting Section 18-41, adoption of the I E C C by references in Chapter...
Hold on.
Sorry. Chapter 18, building regs of the municipal code of the Town of Basalt, and adopting by reference the 2015 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code. Wow. Whew.
Here it is.
Oh, boy, can I read that right now?
Oh, that's why it's not in the packet.
It's all...
Hi, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening.
Charlie.
I'm Jim Wilson, the Building Department. Charlie Eckert from the Green Team. And we're here to sell you the I E C C 2015 edition, because we're way behind on all our codes. We get the strong support from the Green Code, or the Green Team, to adopt the most recent edition of the Energy Conservation Code, which is 50% better, I've heard that number, than where we are now. So, it's a big step for us, and if we were in a bubble, it would probably cause some consternation among, among the building elements. But we were within a valley that, where everyone else has moved ahead, and we kind of got left in, left behind, so we're just catching up with everyone else. So, the building community is familiar with it, pretty much, so it won't be such a shock to make that big step. I, I don't know that there's any, any big changes. We're not going to do amendments to it. It's going to go just the way it is. Gives the developers some flexibility and go the prescriptive route, which says you have to do this, 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 and this, or you can take a performance approach and do some testing and modeling and that sort of thing, and, and still comply. I think we have testers, enough testers in the valley, we discussed this, that, that option remains viable. I think that's all I've got. Maybe Charlie can add something.
Yeah. So, I'm Charlie Eckert. I'm the Building Science Coordinator for CORE, the Community Officer Resource Division. I'm on the Green Team. As Jim mentioned, I've been a strong proponent of Basalt adopting the 2015 I E C C. Mainly, it's a substantial increase in, in code requirements, not only from insulation levels, air sealing levels, mechanical and lighting levels. I think another, one of the big advancements in this edition of the code is transparency within the working documents. It requires that the, the architect very clearly show the building envelope and all the details that go along with that, to ensure that it is sealed properly, it is waterproofed properly, it's insulated properly. These are big steps, and Basalt is currently in last place on, on, on the code edition. We're in the 2006 edition. So, so not only is the importance of the advancement of the code levels and building science levels, but also it's important to provide a continuum of, of building science throughout the valley. All of our contractors and architects are typically working on numerous projects from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And to switch back and forth between 2006, 2009, 2012, 2015 codes is onerous from any of their standpoints. So, let's bring, let's raise the bar, bring it all up to modern building science, and, and enforce it.
Thanks. I have a quick question. This is really sparse packet information. Is there something that we should have been, like, reading? Doesn't say anything.
Well, we, we can lend you the book between now and second reading. The other thing that we handed out that we said was attached, was just kind of the...
I've read out the book.
The, the Matrix of...
He's writing white.
Why don't we have a five-minute recess, so Jackie can read it?
Of where everyone else was on the different codes. But the other thing that I did want to just say is that we had suggested that 25th for the second reading, because we were kind of jumping ahead that we wouldn't have a meeting. So, if we have the motion, if we could set the second reading in public hearing for the 18th, that would be, that would be good.
For the 18th?
Yeah. Instead of the 25th.
The special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here.
Gary?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 27, Series 2016, and set the public hearing on October 18th.
Second. I have one comment. I've been on this code for about a year now. The major problem that I'm seeing in snowmass is the thermal insulation on the outside. The continuous, the contractors and the architects are having trouble getting on board for stone applications and stuff like that. So, I've made an amendment, not to the code, but to our policy in snowmass, that I'm allowing spray foam and then bad insulation, until these guys can get that figured out.
Mark, that's, that's the prescriptive code.
Correct.
That this code allows for a performance path by which you can bypass that and, and achieve that in different...
I just wanted to give Mr. Wilson a heads-up on that.
Yeah, good, thank you.
All the other aspects of the code seem to be falling into place.
Let's get together and talk about this further sometime.
It's kind of late tonight.
Okay. Not tonight. Do we have a motion?
In a second.
In a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thanks for your work. Thank you. Thanks for hanging out. Thank you for hanging out. Thank you, Charlie.
You bet. My pleasure.
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, first reading of, we're almost done, of Ordinance 28, an ordinance of the town approving amendments to the municipal code of the town, amending Chapter 7, Health, Sanitation, and Animals, by creating a new article entitled Recycling and Waste Reduction, and amending the town's fee schedule. Mr. Lind?
This is an ordinance that if you have to approve of code amendments, establishing curbside recycling regulations for the town, as well as establishing a requirement for a trash hauler permit, as well as fees associated with that. The reasons for the proposed amendments, Waste Management notified the town staff at the end of last year that they were going to stop doing their public recycling at the Willets Center, because their costs were too high, and it wasn't in their, in their program. So, the town and Picken County split the costs for this year to keep it open, and it's about $3,600 a month that we're splitting. So, the Green Team thought it was appropriate to work on a curbside recycling ordinance, so that we would have kind of a backup plan in place if that went away. So, that's why we brought the language to you. It's based on Carbondale's ordinance. And on the first page of your staff memo, it's got the highlights, basically requires trash haulers to provide recycling service at no additional cost to the trash service, require trash haulers to accept glass, aluminum, tin, paper, cardboard, brown paper bags, and plastic containers. Would also establish a permitting system with a nominal fee of $100 per year. And it would require volumetric collection and billing for trash, so kind of pay as you throw. And that's to encourage a reduction in trash. And then it also establishes hours of operation for trash haulers with no Sunday operations. So, that's kind of the basic nuts and bolts of the proposed ordinance. Staff would entertain questions?
Let me talk to Carbondale, how this is working?
We haven't really had much discussion. We tried to keep it simple.
Okay. Before second reading, could you just reach out and see how they're working?
Okay, Katie, then Mark?
Ah, just a quick question. Are we working with Picken County on their composting program? And if we're not, can we, or can we charge the Green Team to start looking into that? Because it's a really important thing, if we're trying to save our dump and save our planet, and...
We, we have started kind of working on composting for special events. That's kind of been our initial step, and that was Green Team-directed. But yeah, we can look at expanding that.
That'd be great, because I think, I mean, Picken County has a huge push right now. I mean, they're giving away containers, and they're trying to save the dump.
Yeah, we've got containers for the school and stuff like that. There's a lot more we could do, it was just...
This is step one?
Yeah.
Yeah, special events were step one, and...
Okay. Yes.
Made huge strides at the Sunday market this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I was a trash company, I don't see how I could do this without raising the price.
Well, what, what we understand they actually do is they, they raise fees for fuel and stuff like that.
Yeah, we get surcharges already.
So, that's kind of how we understand they get around that. They've done that in Aspen and other places.
So, the residents are going to end up paying for this?
A little bit more, probably.
Yeah. I could swear I pay extra for curbside, but anyway, I don't know.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
With this volumetric, that's why I wanted to see how Carbondale's doing it. The volumetric way is not typical right now. I just pay for...
Right.
Two.
Two.
Yeah, I pay for two things, but I didn't see a lot of choice. So, it's, it would be interesting if I got more choice, actually, on my bill.
Well, a lot of your stuff will now go in different containers, huh?
Well, I have a cycle container, but it's, I don't know. It'd be interesting to see the volumetric piece. I don't know. That's why I wanted to see how Carbondale's working.
Okay.
Any other information we want to have brought back for the next round?
I, I guess I...
Yes, Bernie, sorry.
So, I, I'm not as involved as these other, my colleagues are. What is the volumetric collection of trash and billing? What do you mean? And how does that go to affect my toad? On my tote, on my standard tote?
Basically, what it means is, the more you throw away, the higher your billing's going to be, so they've got to have a graduated rate.
So, if I have my tote half full, do I pay the same as I'm paying now?
Yes.
And what if my tote is full?
You pay the same. If you, if you have to get another tote, that's, that's what they're trying to get you at.
Six gallons versus 106 gallons.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. As Mark was suggesting, it's...
The size of your tote.
The size of your tote, you know, you have the bigger tote, you're going to pay more.
Get a contractor, like...
Yeah, and who's going to, you know, and bill and make this collector of the trash?
Yeah.
So, they're going to change their way of billing?
Yeah. But they do it other places, too.
Are they doing it in Aspen as well, or only...
That's my understanding. In Aspen, it's volumetric.
Okay, so, the companies are, are familiar and already set up for the administration.
Sorry, sorry. Sign it again.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 28, and set second reading for October 18th.
Good job.
Seconded up.
Susan's looking at me, giving it a look.
All right. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post.
Jen, me.
Motion to adjourn?
Ten-four, I second that.
Done. Thanks, guys.
See you in the spring.
No wisdom?
No wisdom?
No wisdom?